That clock is fast back there. This EBA meeting is now open. The first thing we'll do is approve some minutes. April 21st, 2021. Anybody have any comments on that?
No.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of May 19th, 2021. Any comments on those? Seeing none, a motion to approve.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
June 16th, 2021. Any comments on those?
No.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, let the record show Paul McMillan's here.
Hi, Paul.
Our first item tonight is continuation of 12 Anna Teresa Way. Mr. Sullivan and Counselor. Jeff?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. Before we get into the public hearing, if you don't mind, I think we should welcome our newest zoning board full member. We have Scott Fitzgerald, and we also have a brand-new alternate member, Dan Britko.
Yep, welcome, boys.
And, let's see. We have a lot of, as you know, busy agenda, a lot of public hearings tonight, and a full house. We have some added seating out there for now, and we're just going to do the best we can to keep things moving as quickly and smoothly as possible. If it gets too crowded, I know you may ask, allow some room for those folks whose petition is actually before the board or the abutters of interest.
So what Jeff is talking about is if you're here for McDonald's, there are six items in front of it. So you're more than welcome to go sit in the halls. You don't have to listen to all six of these. They won't come get you. I promise. I promise. Anything else, Jeff?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Counselor, you're up.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name's Melissa Robbins. I'm from the law firm of Farrelan Robbins. I was not at the last meeting with Mr. Sullivan, but I did get to watch the entire show on YouTube. I think I was the only one watching it. So I did watch the entire thing. I know that the board had concerns about the legal requirements and the impacts that this variance may have to the abutters, especially the abutters to the east. I know the board already spent some time on this hearing, and I know you have nine hearings tonight, so I won't belabor all of the variance issues, but I would like to run through them quickly. Just the general variance requirements the board had concerns with. So generally speaking, the first requirement for a variance is that the lot has a hardship owing to the soil shape or topography that affects this land but not other lands in the district. I know that it's in your packet, but I did put it up here in the board. This is the lot here in Teresa Way, the lot of Mr. Sullivan. If you actually take his lot, and I highlighted yellow here, the actual zoning envelope, if you can build anything in on his lot, this is it. This is the entire building area. Basically, the entire area to the left-hand side is taken up by his house. And the area to the right-hand side, I know that Mr. Sullivan had mentioned at the last meeting that there was a riprap or a swale there. It's a little bit more than that. That's the actual drainage swale for the subdivision. The drainage swale goes down into a culvert that runs under the driveway of the neighbor and then flows into the wetland. So this area here is actually not buildable without significant work. It would require a revision to the subdivision, a revision to the drainage calculations, an updated order of conditions, but obviously that drainage would need to be dealt with in a different way. Just generally speaking about the lot as well, this large portion over here of the lot, you can see it's cut off. This is actually part of his property, but there's a 20-foot easement, drainage easement that goes to the subdivision in the rear, so that's actually unbuildable as well. His septic system is located in the front yard, I think basically because the drainage basically takes up the right-hand side of the property. And then also these lines that I painted in orange, these are the wetland setback areas on his lot. So as you can see, really, his house is the buildable portion of this lot. In order to do anything else on his lot, he needs to come to this board. And I think that for the pool itself, Mr. White, who built the subdivision, had to come back and get a variance for the same exact setback, for the same exact issue, and the board gave a 10-foot setback for this pool. So that's really an overview of the first item you have to prove for a variance, which is that the lot itself has a hardship owing to the soil shape or topography, which I think this one actually does. The second one is that a literal enforcement of the bylaw would create a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the client. I think at the board's last meeting, they were very focused on this was a want and that you want to spend money, but the question is really, what happens if the board doesn't grant the variance? This is just an accessory structure, just like any other accessory structure that this board may allow. A literal enforcement of this bylaw does leave him one location to build this paved area for a play court. It's right here. This is the area right here. So again, like I just said, this is over the drainage swale, and it's actually closer to this abutter, the eastern abutter, that was here at the last meeting, and I think that I saw them here today, but they may be out in the hallway. So this spot here is the location where something could be built. But in order to build it, like I said, you would have to go through all of that process, which would be a significant financial hardship, and may not even be buildable to go through that process in order to redesign the drainage for the entire subdivision. The final one is a petition can easily be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. So I just want to remind the board, this relief tonight is for a rear yard setback. Okay? The rear yard setback that we're asking for is right here. Okay? This is the 30-foot setback. We're asking for 10.2 feet. The abutter to the rear was here at the last meeting and stated that he had no issues with the setback whatsoever, and he had no problem with the game court or the play court being put in that area. The board had raised some concerns, and the abutter to the eastern side had raised some concerns. So we've gone back and revised the plan and tried to address some of those concerns. One of the questions was, can we pull this over? Is there any way we can pull it over away from that lot line? And we have. So from that lot line now, this is now the proposed location. This has been pulled another 9.3 feet away from this lot line. The lot line there requires 15 feet, excuse me, and we're now 32.3 feet away from this side lot line. And just to give you some perspective here, I know I have two plans. This is the plan where we could put it by zoning by right, which I, when I say zoning by right, I mean dimensionally in the zoning bylaws. If we actually put it here, the location to the house, which I know was a question of the board at the last meeting, is 212.6 feet. I took this picture right here from the corner of this culvert at the edge. You could see what the view would be to the eastern abutter should we put the play court in the allowed zoning location. That's this, okay? The proposed location is right here. It's actually pulled back a little bit from their front door. It's 221 feet from their front yard. I took this picture standing, this is the shed that's in the middle of where we're putting the play court. As you can see, I took it right at the edge of the shed, so you could see if we were standing in the center of the court, what the view shed would be. And there's actually a larger group of trees on their portion of the property that would screen it better than if we put it in the location by right. The second thing that we did was we decided to move the shed. As you know, there's a shed on the property. In the previous plan, you saw the shed was being placed over this side of the property between Sullivan's house and the play court. What we've decided to do instead to give more of a solid buffer is to move the shed on the other side of the proposed play court. That actually gives a solid barrier between the play area and the abutters. The final thing we did was I actually did go back. The board had referenced that Randolph Circle approval, so I went back and looked at what was approved during that Randolph Circle approval. And one of the biggest things was landscaping. This picture here is a portion of landscaping that's on Mr. Sullivan's property now. What we're proposing is to an additional similar landscaping, just like this now, on the other side of the shed. Mr. Waterman showed us proposed eastern red cedar trees, but really it would be similar landscaping that would look like this. So now there would be a buffer between the court that we've now moved over 10 feet with the shed in the way, and then an additional landscape buffer that would go behind the shed to give additional screening. Much like Randolph Circle, we'll also agree not to light. The court will not be lit at night. In addition, this wasn't in Randolph Circle, but we would agree to maintain the shed, which is going to act as our buffer, and maintain this landscape buffer as long as we have that play court on the property. It'd be agreed-upon condition of approval. So if that's not done, the building inspector can come fine us $300 per incident per day. So overall, gentlemen, I think this proposed location is far superior to the by-right zoning locations for the reason I've stated. It contains that screening, it contain and screen the play area to the abutter to the east. It protects the wetlands and the resource areas, which would be impacted if we were to move it in the by-right zoning location. It maintains the existing draining for this drainage, excuse me, for the subdivision, and it gives the children a safe place to play, a way from the street. I think the applicant's done a lot of work since the last meeting. He's made a lot of good faith effort to try to satisfy the board's comments and the comments from the abutters, and it's our hope that with these modifications that the board can support the variance application. And I know that I've given you a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. I guess the first question that I have is on the new plan, let's call it.
Yes.
The well is right at the corner of the play area.
That's why we pulled it, that's the limitation of where we can pull it back to. So the wellhead is the end.
So if I draw a straight line, continuing it through the well, what's the distance that you're off by?
From the wellhead?
Yeah. So in other words?
From here to here?
Yeah.
I think Mr. Waterman told me that was approximately five feet, and that we were going to need to buffer it somehow for the play, for the children to play there.
So it is five feet?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a lot, because, you know, I would, if it was a foot or two?
Right.
I would be more than willing to give you a foot or two more on the backside?
Right.
To drag the whole thing forward.
Yeah, we actually stood at that corner and had the same discussion, because we wanted to make sure that we pulled it as far away as we could, but left a safe distance from that wellhead on that side.
Okay. I drove down in there, looked the whole thing over, and I'm glad that you decided to pull it back. Solid landscaping. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I, and I was questioning, you did a good job to go through those criteria, Melissa, you always do. And I was questioning, and I still do, you know, whether court is an essential, as an amenity versus... And I just would, you know, a couple of comments. And look, question first, is, there was a mention, I think, by Dave last time, that maybe some communication between the abutters who are concerned and Mr. Sullivan may have any of that?
Sure, we did, Mr. Sullivan did email the abutters and texted the abutters, and I think that they're actually here. I thought that I saw them in the hallway, so I don't know if they want to speak to that.
Okay. So apparently, there's been no coming?
No, there's not been no communication between the two parties.
The only thing I would mention to these, this type of thing, well, two things. I have a kind of a total hold of it, too. You know, there is, I think there's, the public is 100% these people. There's no one else. The other, the abutter on the other side has total screening. He's in favor of it, but he's really not impacted. So it is a total front view, an obstructive view for the DeRoggerios. And even just, it kind of occurred to me, during this pandemic, we had a situation in my neighborhood where it was fabulous. Kids played volleyball in back of somebody's house every Saturday and Sunday morning. But there were a dozen cars of high school kids coming in. And so, you know, if I'm an abutter, I have a concern that there's going to be cars there and some car, somebody's got a Bluetooth that's going to be blasting and da-da-da-da-da. So that's kind of just out there. And then, you know, on the screening, and I went to Randolph Circle, and I think we have to be very particular about that, because, I'll pass this, actually, I made a couple of copies here, but we on Randolph Circle audited eight-to-10-foot red cedars by name, which, you know, should grow to 20 feet. And this is what we got. Three crappy five-foot spruce, two or three of which are dead.
Right.
And my point on that is that if we condition this, it's in perpetuity. So when the 15-year-old basketball player is 23, and no one gives any care about using that court? That, and the hot tub's starting to deteriorate, and there's no real interest in maintaining that, it's obligatory that that either has to be maintained to the level that we specify if there are conditions. Or I suppose, I guess, Jeff, remove it and put it back in the condition that it was. But I think sometimes as a board, maybe we lose track. We get it, it's done. We're thinking of today. Any screening in conditions are in perpetuity, I believe. So if it looks like a bad envelope in the next 10 years, I think that's, you know, I'm sure the neighbors would be certain to point that out. But I just mentioned that as a consideration, this is, it's something that we have to be aware of.
Sure.
I think Mr. Sullivan has to be aware of to maintain that, whatever, if there's something agreed to.
Mr. Chair, can I just respond quickly?
Sure.
So just to the question about the rear yard abutter, I did ask that question myself because I walked that yard. And if you look on the plan, even that plan that's behind you, I actually had Mr. Waterman give me the distance to the, because it's actually their back porch here that's at the rear of the property, it's their pool and their back porch.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's actually about 157 feet. There's less screening here, so you can actually see here. Because when we were trying to figure out how far over we could adjust, you can almost still see this a little bit better if the landscaping's a little bit thicker here, but it is closer to this neighbor than it will ever be to the eastern neighbor. But this is the rear of their property, and this is their, this is their front entrance. So we were cognizant of that fact. That's why we were trying to put the majority of the screening on the eastern side, because, like you said, the people to the rear didn't have an issue with this.
No, if I stood there at that court, I could not see a lot of that house that you mentioned, but I could clearly, looking at the front porch of the DeRoggerio house.
Right.
The visibility is different between those two parties involved.
And we would agree to a condition, and I think I alluded to it, but maybe I didn't say it strongly enough, that this would be kept in good repair. Not just the court, but the shed that we're now using as screening and the landscaping would agree to it as a condition. So if it ever did fall into disrepair, or the shed is gone, or the landscaping's dead, the building inspector can come enforce it, and we could be fined $300 per incident per day. And that would also go along as a condition of the variance approval.
I'd be inclined to support the new plan. If you're going to have screening, it doesn't matter if it's that much closer. The screening should be efficient for either side, either position.
So I did have a question. Two other issues came up last time. One was lighting, and the second is hours of use. Ian, would you comment on that?
Oh, sure. So I, we will agree to have no lighting. There'll be no lighting on the play court whatsoever. That was also a condition of your last game court approval. And there's no, I mean, there's no lights out there, so we have no expectation there'll be deep nighttime activity that would be noisy. I don't know if I can put a time limitation on the use of the?
I'm asking specifically to propose?
The dusk.
The time. Dawn to dusk, eight to five.
I don't know what the?
It seemed like?
Sunset? Right, exactly. I mean, when it's dark, nobody's going to be playing basketball, so that would, we'd be fine with a condition that says that it should, will not be played with after dark.
It would be pretty dark down there.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's going to be very, without any lighting, it'll be very difficult to play with. And Jeff, the hoop is proposed against the rear. I know that it's an odd shape, but the hoop is actually proposed against the length of the rear of the property. So it'll be very dark back there. There's landscaping, there's no lighting there.
Yeah. So I just want to clarify one thing, Mr. Chair. So even if there isn't an explicit condition of approval, if, if the board includes landscaping and screening as part of their approval, that is something that is in perpetuity because it runs with the variance decision.
Right.
However, it is preferred, and it makes zoning enforcement much simpler if it is explicitly called out. So big picture, it doesn't necessarily change anything, but it makes it always easier if we have to try to take enforcement down the road.
So it will be, it will be an order of condition. So if we go back to this, the new plan, and they have proposed eastern red cedar trees, in relationship to this?
Right.
Where, where is that going to go?
We're actually considering putting the, putting these plantings to the rear of the shed. Okay? So this would actually be an additional screening. Right now, there's nothing back there. It's hard to tell. There's a cleared area right here, and then it goes to grass. And I think before this area was cleared, it was all grass. Okay? So what will happen now is this bigger shed will move back probably to the center of this area, and then this landscaping will be across the back edge here. So where their driveway rounds, which is hard to see, now they'll actually have screening here, which they never had before.
Okay, so that would be my comment, is where the last tree ends on this plan, follow it to the, to the backside of the lot.
Sure.
So that you have a whole row of a hedge, almost?
Right.
Let's call it. And it doesn't have to, you know, I mean, you want some low shrubs, some tall trees. You want a mixture of things.
For lack of a better term, that's why I showed a picture. It's a mixed variety, but it actually is a pretty thick buffer that's on that property.
Correct.
And that's, that's on the other side of the drainage swale, so something very similar to that would be planted behind the shed.
And that's something that we would probably leave up to staff to say yes or no on the screening?
Identify the species.
Look at him roll his eyes at me.
Appreciate your confidence in us. What I think makes sense is, once they move the shed, maybe they can mark in the field where they intend to, before they plan it, install the landscaping measures, then we can go out, take some pictures before, some pictures after, and if we have any questions, we can certainly consult with the chair. If there's any way.
Does the board have any more questions, comments? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this? Seeing none, is there any in the audience to speak against this? Come up to the microphone, please.
We're the owners at 14, 14 Anna Teresa Way. So our concerns are still the same. I mean, some of our concerns haven't been addressed. One is the noise. You know, you may move it 10 feet, but that's not going to change the noise. The other thing is the pictures that were provided don't show all the views. They don't show the views from the second floor of our house. They don't show the views from, from our porch. And we're going to see that.
And then we're going to hear it.
The other thing, and we mentioned it in our letter, is the devaluation of our property. So somebody who comes in to buy our house, and we're going to sell it at some point, may not want a basketball court off their front lawn. And, and how are we compensated for that? So, you know, the thing is, this is a luxury item. This isn't a need. And there's an option to put it on the existing property without making zoning variations. It's just more convenient to put it where it impedes our property. And, and that's, that's really what we're upset about. We're not upset about, you know, we have kids ourself. We want kids outside playing. But we bought this property because of how, how private it was, right? And now we're going to have kids playing basketball right, right off our front lawn. So we're losing that. It's not what we bought.
Okay. Ask questions?
Sure.
So where it's proposed, you're going to look at it? They just expressed that legally, they can put it closer to your house.
No, they can't.
That's what?
Yeah, well, if you, I can respond quickly, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
This is the, this is the building envelope, right here. So I had the engineer actually prepare a plan, so if you pull it into the building envelope, which you can see right here, the rectangle, the same rectangle fits right into the zoning. So for zoning, we can fit the same exact play court right there.
Which would be?
And that was the one that's 212 feet from your front property.
If the variance is approved.
No.
No. This is by right.
This is your turn.
This is by his right. So he's actually pushing it away from your property.
They'll meet all the setback requirements and everything. They don't have to come to this board if they go to that site, which puts it closer to your house. They don't have to put any screening in. They could put lighting in if they wanted to. All the things that we've already said we're going to condition it with, they could do.
I don't, I don't.
We're not engineers.
Yeah.
Can you, is that on that plan, Melissa, can you?
Melissa, another question.
It's on, it's on this plan. There's a plan in your packet, I think.
Seeing it.
That's that one, sorry. You know, the screen is cut off. That's okay. I colored it. I did this color.
Right, right. They could do that by right, right, right.
Plant it in front of the, between your, along the road there.
That is what that will do. So if I, this planting here will actually be between their driveway and the back of the shed. So now it'll go planting, shed, and then play court. So the landscape will be there.
Again, hearing the way what Jim said, it's got to be some substantial growth there to go in there.
Right. So that's why we were suggesting something like this, which is already existing in their yard, clearly does well in this area and does give a significant screening, a natural buffer.
Another question, Melissa. So if the applicant was to put it in the legal area, and that drainage has to be changed, whose expense is it? The town's, the subdivisions?
No, I mean, the entire subdivision would have to be redone, so that would be, all be the applicant's expense, because it would be for his own purpose. And I think, I'm sorry.
So staff has not reviewed any drainage rights or any of abutting subdivisions for what is in place, whether by easement or shown on approved plans. We haven't done any research into other subdivisions, so we can't comment about the drainage and what rights they do or don't have to affect it.
But the, I can tell you, just because I did pull the original approvals for the subdivision today when I was preparing, that the riprap swale was part of the drainage plan that was required by the original order of conditions when it was done by Mark White. But there is no easement, there's actually no technical easement on the property to allow for it, but it is part of the overall development. So the town would have some pretty good? So the town would have some pretty good legs to say that it needs to stay there or be modified to function. Which is actually part of the reason that it makes building on that piece very difficult.
Very what?
Very difficult.
Difficult, yes, yes, okay, yes.
I can't see how the proposal is closer to my house. Maybe closer to my property line on a certain side, but not closer to my house. I'm missing that point.
So I think what they're saying is if they put it in the by right area, it would move it closer to your house. Because it's coming forward and up. But by pushing it back to where they moved it to, the extra 10 feet, it's 221 feet from the corner of your foundation.
Knowing the space, I, it just, it's not logical to me, to be honest.
Like I said, we're not engineers.
Yeah, they can't bring it this way. And definitely can't bring it back this way. It would have to move away from, away from the house.
The only place they can bring it is the yellow.
Right. Right.
Which is closer to your driveway.
No, no, he's already, he's already not within the feet, within our property line on the back corner. On the left, on the right, southernmost corner, it's already within maybe six feet of my property line.
I, I don't think the property line is the issue. It's the, the distance to your house is what we're trying to get away from. So he, the, the-
So, but you can't turn it that way, then, because then you're too close to my property line. That's, that's not even-
But according to what the engineers are telling us, that yellow area is legally buildable.
So that's, that's got to be the right distance from your property line. And the driveway is the property line, correct?
No, not on, not on that, that corner there.
According to these plans, though, the left side of your driveway is right on the property line. According to these plans.
It, it jets out.
It jets out down where the driveway turns, but all the way down your driveway, it shows right here that your property line is the left side of your driveway.
It jets out at the culvert is where it starts, starts angling towards the rock wall. Not at the curve. That is not true.
See the black line?
Yep, that is not correct. That is not correct.
That's proposed to be the property line.
Nope, that is not correct. We had it surveyed and he had it, and Dave had it surveyed. That is not correct. And he's put stakes out where it's very clear where it is.
So did, did Land Tech go out and survey this? Or did they pull the plans from the subdivision plans?
No, the, this line I asked him, and you can see on the, this is stamped by Michael Ross, who's the surveyor, that that line to the approved, to the location that we have it, I don't want to mess up the numbers. So if we put it in the zoning by right location, I'm going to call it the dimensional zoning by right location, it's 212.6 feet to the existing foundation of 14 Ann Teresa. And if we put it in the proposed location, pull it back the 10 feet that we're proposing along that property line, it's 221.8 feet to that same foundation. Because we're pulling it further away to the edge.
Right, but he's questioning the exact lot line.
The lot, this is a surveyed lot line. I mean, it's stamped by a licensed surveyor.
Right.
Oh, okay.
We're reading one thing and he's-
I am not a surveyor, but I know that this plan is in fact stamped by a licensed surveyor. So I rely on that.
He had a survey, I had it surveyed. Through a different line. Surveyor marked it. And mine said, I, when my surveyor came out, he said it was true.
So what's, what are you saying the differences? Have you, tell me how many feet you're talking about here, or is?
At, at the, at the corner where the driveway turns.
Yeah.
It's got to be 10, 15 feet to, right to the rock wall. There's a, there's a bed on the other side of the driveway there that, that, it's, that's my property. It goes right to the rock wall.
Well, the line shows you a property goes to the rock.
Yeah, it shows it goes to the rock.
It shows it goes to the rock wall.
Yeah.
That arrow-
He's saying at the culvert, it starts to veer off the driveway. Whereas the plan shows the property line goes to the corner of the driveway.
Right, right.
Yes.
That's the dispute right now.
I'm not sure how impactful that is, if it did veer off by a bit.
Well, what he's saying is if it veers off, the legal building area would be pushed further back.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
And any, just so the board can see, this is the approved plan for Ann Teresa Way. The approved subdivision plan, which was called Sweets' Place 2. This runs the same line. So this is the same distance, 75.542. That's what they're-
75.502, yeah.
Yep, 2071. It's, it's right on.
Did you have, your surveyor's version?
No, no, I, I don't have it. And, and he just, he came out and confirmed it.
Yeah, but you have nothing, you have no documentation of it.
I, I had to call a surveyor to get it. I, I mean, I didn't think I needed that today.
Land Tech, they did it.
Land, Land Tech did it.
Land Tech is your surveyor also? So these plans are right. That's who did this plan.
But that's, that's not what our, our plan sho, that's not what the property line shows. That black line there.
I can imagine, oh, Land Tech would have the same exact plans to give to you that we would have right here. So Land Tech did both? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
The points don't change.
Yeah, that doesn't, this doesn't play out.
You know, and where the driveway starts to curve, there is a space in there, okay? It's not very big, but when you look at the scale of this plan, it probably is 10 feet. So you, you probably, you probably are correct that there is a space in there, but the line is still the line. So, any other comments?
No, I, I think we laid it out in our, you know, what, what we sent you, the pictures we sent. You know, and, and just the same thing, you know, this, this is a luxury item. This is not something that's a need or a financial hardship that's been presented.
Right.
I mean, we feel it, it's, it's a bigger hardship for us because it changes the privacy of our lot, the noise, crowds, that are going to be there. And, and, you know, that, this is not what we bought when we purchased the home.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Emily?
I'd like to make a few comments. Emily Teller, Nine Texas Road. I'm going to ask a question which may seem inappropriate, but it has to do with my comments. How old are the children in this applicant's?
15 and-
High school and junior high, I think.
Okay, there is a basketball court at the Jack Walsh Field. And these children could ride their bike on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and go on Griffin Road and get to that basketball court. There's a lot of parking in that basketball court for their friends in the parking lot. And I just would like to point out that nobody spoke in favor of this. And the noise was the first thing I thought of when I heard this. If I lived next to somebody who was going to be playing basketball all day long in the summer, it would make me crazy. And I think also respecting, seeing from the second floor that they can see this. I think that's another issue. I'm a little concerned that the board is weighing, perhaps allowing, if you don't give this variance, allowing the applicant to impact the drainage for the entire subdivision. I think that really is looking at a good for one person over the good for the whole group. And there you go. Thank you very much. Oh, I did want to, while I have the mic, I'd like to point out there are over 20 people in the hall, and we can't see anything. We can't see any of you talk. We couldn't see anything that she was pointing at because the only image that we have available to that monitor is this. So we really are not getting evidentiary information.
Is there anybody in the hallway here for this hearing?
I don't know that. I think they would have come forward.
Is there anybody out there for this hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, come on in.
They've missed a lot of information. And I guess I'm concerned about future items on this agenda this evening. I just wanted to show you what's going on now. Thank you.
By the way, Emily, that was brought up. There was a discussion last meeting about that, that basketball court. In fact, I brought it up, at the Jack Walsh Field. And it's a comp, it's a composition court, and there's one net that's bent. But it is, it is a decent facility for any kids of any age.
Yeah, and kids are using it.
That's very true. It's about a mile and two tenths from their residence.
It's a very short bike ride.
That was discussed last time.
Thank you.
But I have a question to rebut.
Yeah.
So if the kids are out there playing basketball, right, and they're making noise.
Where? Which place?
At the residence.
Yes.
On this basketball court, if it was allowed. What's the difference between kids playing soccer or football there all day long?
There's a big difference. If you're playing soccer, you're on a grass backyard. And there's no noise with the ball.
Yelling, you're still kicking?
Children's noise isn't an issue.
And that's all it is? It's whether it's basketball?
Basketball is a banging all the time.
And they're not kicking a soccer ball all day?
It's a different noise. They're kicking it on grass. And also, I'd like to point out, these kids are going to be moving on in five years.
Right.
Those trees that are being planted are not even going to be screening in five years.
Depends on what size we make it.
That's true.
We've discussed that to apparently, I'm sorry you couldn't hear that, that we did bring that. I actually did about the, you know, as kids age, the interest in the court becomes, it diminishes. And therefore the care diminishes, or the interest in caring for it diminishes. And we emphasize that to the applicant, that he's on the hook to keep it up in the, in the condition that it is day one and approved.
But it seems like a permanent change.
It goes in perpetuity.
Right, but it's permanent change that may affect the neighbor's property values for a temporary use. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Just for the record, I did go down the hallway and inquired if anyone else wanted to speak about 12 Ann Teresa Way. No one indicated that they did.
Can I let the record reflect that?
Just something quick, Mr. Chair. I, I know I pointed out in my letter, but I didn't say it this evening. But the other alternative here is that Mr. Sullivan could put in another driveway. Nothing stops him from having a circular driveway that comes off of the edge of his driveway, comes all the way up to the edge of his, Abutter's driveway, and put a basketball court right at the end of it, with a basketball hoop right on the driveway, like lots of people do. And you'd have none of these conditions. You'd have none of the landscaping, you'd have none of the buffer, and you could have a kid bouncing that ball all night long with no conditions whatsoever. And you could be right next to a street light. You could actually put a light on your property. You'd have none of these conditions whatsoever. So I understand that people may want to hear, not hear a bouncing ball of a child next door, but the argument that it's going to be a nuisance to the neighbor is, I don't buy it. Just because there's so many other alternatives out here for him to put in a basketball hoop and for people to hear that noise all day long, this is the best case scenario.
And my only comment is, I like to hear kids out there playing basketball, quite frankly, instead of being in the house. There is an argument too, that you could say, so a kid with a hoop is, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be Disney World. A kid with a hoop at the end of the driveway, that's what 98% of the kids in town have. Not many have their own private basketball court. So it, the argument that it is an amenity is something that's not a, have to die for for any kid, it still stands out there. That, yeah, this kicks, I went through that neighborhood, there's probably three or four hoops in driveways, right up the street. Neighbors have the various types, movable, up and down type. There's, there's a nice menu out there of basketball hoops that go on people's driveways this day. So, you know, two kids want playing, that's in the driveway. A court attracts their friends, and they have a game. And there is a different noise factor when you have eight kids playing a basketball game versus however many play at the end of a driveway on a hoop. So I think the hoop at the end of the driveway is different from what's being proposed here. As far as neighbors and noise and impact and dribbling or whatever. And I, I like to see kids play basketball too. I love it. But again, we're hearing two sides here and just trying to balance the whole thing. And it's, it's a, it's up there in the air.
My concern, as Melissa stated, legally, he could possibly detriment that drainage swale, which is going to cause detriment to the entire neighborhood. And legally, he can do this.
Right.
Whereas now, we still have, well, no, no.
Not sure.
Not 100% sure, but now he's trying to work with everybody. Like you said, I agree, it's an amenity. But legally, in his rights, he could put it somewhere that could be more detrimental to the entire neighborhood.
Right.
Whereas now, under conditions, we can control what actually gets put there.
But he'll be responsible if that, that drainage system is, is diverted to a lesser functionality it has, he's going to be on the hook for that.
Sure, absolutely.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, so we are here tonight to talk about, or vote on a variance for a rear yard setback only. Not a side yard, front, and it's just a rear setback. Yep, so can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, sir.
Call those in favor.
Aye.
Okay. So we need a motion to vary the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 10.2. Do I have a motion?
So, second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And Scott, I will vote in affirmative also. With the conditions that we've talked about, the screening, no lighting, the shed and the screening will be maintained in perpetuity. I don't think that's going to be a problem. It's a nice area with a nice landscaping.
I have a question on the screening, Scott, though. Again, we mentioned on-
We can't get into a lot of after talk.
No, but I think screening is generally, on, on Randolph Circle, we said specifically three types of trees.
Yep.
And it wasn't complied with, and two out of the three are dead. So if we say screening, that's your generic term.
So you want to, you want to identify?
Well, I, the footage, or Scott, Jeff suggested that there's a review of the screening prior to it being put, something to-
So maybe-
Look at it before, that's just, that's just leaving it out there, is screening is a generic.
Maybe we should have a, suggest a respectfully, a condition of approval whereby the applicant proposes specific plantings. If we don't feel it's adequate in either size or spacing or whatever screening values, we can certainly express our discontent. And we won't sign off. If you want staff to approve, they have to come back to the board and have a discussion.
Okay.
And assume the shed would be removed first and then screened. The first move is the, first step is move the shed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So there was a question about the number of kids who might come there to play. Do you want to put any condition on parking? I mean, it looks like there's plenty of places to park, but.
That's a disaster to think about enforcement.
Right.
And if there's a parking problem, we receive complaints, we would react to that?
Well, but it's, it's, excuse me, Jeff, I agree, but it's at least to set the, the bound or the expectation, how's that?
The only fear that I have in doing that is that if, you know, they have a pool party, and there's 15 cars out there, and some kids are playing basketball, how does that count? They have a graduation party, you know, I mean, yeah, anything, I mean, that's kind of, I think the dust that's gone is, is something with some teeth that we can enforce. Okay, Jeff, you all set?
I believe so, sir.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Good luck. Okay, the next agenda item is 12 Bridge Street. Okay, yep.
Hi.
Hi, for the record, your name, please?
My name is Wendy Kessler, and I'm the owner of 12 Bridge Street. I live on property, and I am the owner of Kessler Karate Academy.
I'm Josh Levine, I'm Hassan, but I'm on a mortgage as well.
My husband, Mr. David Levine, cannot be here tonight.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So we'll-
Second. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, thank you, thank you, members of the board. So I currently live down on 12 Bridge Street. The house is up, up the driveway. So when you turn on Bridge Street, you go down a pretty long driveway to the back of the property. And I have one neighbor who, we, has an easement right to our driveway. So when you pull in, you kind of go to the right, and that's my neighbor's home, and then you keep on going all the way to the back, and that's where the karate school is. So how we ended up with this property, I used to be at, on Main Street, I had a karate school next to Westford House of Pizza. And then when COVID hit, you know, it was pretty hard running a karate school. So we started, at that point, all my students were only on Zoom. So we started looking around for a possibility of maybe combining our home with a karate school, and we were like extremely fortunate to find this piece of property. So at the time, it was listed incorrectly, we found out later on, it was listed as mixed-use, commercial, residential. So we didn't, we didn't know there was going to be any trouble at all with just running the business from it. We really fell in love with it and started to go after the real estate transaction. And then pretty far along in, we found out that the owner had gotten a variance because his wife, her name was June Sanders, she was running a gym out of that building right there. But at that point, we were, we were really far along. I had already given notice to my karate school on Main Street that we, that I was moving. So we decided we'd go ahead, and then it wasn't until even after that, we found out, I thought the variance ran with the property. I didn't realize that it had a five-year limit and that it had expired. So at that point, we still hadn't passed papers, but we decided we would go ahead and just hope it all worked out. So we passed papers on it, and the property is exactly as, can be used for my business, exactly the way it is. I don't need any changes at all. There's adequate parking, there's beautiful woods that really create a buffer between me and the neighbors on the other side. And I have a very good working relationship with my, with my neighbor that I share the driveway with. So I'm asking the board today to just allow the karate school to, to continue in this location.
Okay. I'm very familiar with the property. Back in the day, it was Marty Cannelli's property that he used to raise excavation business out of there, hence that big building was built. And then, to your point, Bruce Sanders came and bought a variance for his wife's gym, and he had a design business also that was probably run out of there. And, you know, you suffer a little bit of a hardship by a realtor that doesn't know what the hell they're doing. And, you know, typically, you're correct, variances do run with the property. It's kind of unusual to see a five-year variance or a timed variance. But in any way, you hit the perfect storm with everything. You know, I think this piece of property has benefited from a prior variance relief, and, you know, could be very well suited for what you do. I drove up in there the other day and no one, even though you're there.
I drove into one, I agree with that 100%.
It's tucked into the hill very nicely, you're correct, you have plenty of parking. I rolled the window down, and there was a bunch of kids inside going at it, and I didn't hear any noise. So I thought it was, it's a perfect use for that structure.
It's, part of my school is built on the, it's, the cornerstone of it is respect. And so I'm committed to not only, you know, to teaching these students as well, really, that we've just been, we've lifted an amazing thing with this property, and I want them to treat the property with respect. And it would be, it's an ongoing mission of the school. So we are planning on putting some bat houses up, we have a toad, you know, it's a very, we are very ecologically friendly.
Any questions or comments, Jeff?
Just want to know for the record, we did receive correspondence in favor of this petition from a Westford resident at Levin Woods Pond Drive.
Thank you. Any other questions, Jeff, or Scott?
What, what would your hours of operation be?
So I, we run after-school hours, so.
Till what time in the evening?
Till about nine o'clock, 3:30, or I'm sorry, till about, I'm out, I'm out at nine o'clock. Last class is over at 8:30. So, and what I'm doing right now is I have a 15-minute window between every class. So class goes, you know, 4:30 to 5:15, then I have a 15-minute window, so I can, right now, I'm sanitizing. And then that also allows cars to leave and cars, you know, the next class to come in. So there's never a time where people are going and coming at the same time.
That leads into, how many cars are we talking during the course of a day?
In the course of the whole day?
Or class?
Oh, so per class, it's averaging right now about, about four or five cars.
I would also like to add, when we do larger events, we typically rent a space other than here. So if we're going to have more than like 10, 15 people, you know, we're not going to be able to fit 40 people in that building. So we usually will rent the church up the road or go somewhere else for larger events, so we don't, we don't host big events at this property.
Right now, we use St. Mark's Church, like I just had an event there, Kimball's Farm, we have events there, and Millworks. So anything, anything larger, we deal there.
That's if you have spectators, then.
Yeah, like my instructor came from Washington DC, so that we had a class of about 30 people. So we hosted it at St. Mark's Church.
Or promotions, or sometimes events where we'll have like half the school present, and we just, we can't, we can't do it here.
And that was true as well when I was on Main Street, because of the Westford House of Pizza parking lot, there was no way I could host large events there either. So we have always historically rented if it's going to be a big event.
How long were you at Main Street?
We were there six years. And I do have letters I can submit from, these are from some of my students. And one of particular note is my, they were neighbor, they lived next to Westford House of Pizza, they lived in those condos. So they were neighbors as well as my students, and they, they are well aware of how we always handle large events or parking. So if I may, could I submit this for the record?
So does the board have any other questions or comments? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this?
I'm Andy Burgundy, I'm at 78 Menards Road, so they're across the, what we call the blacksmith pond. They're great neighbors, so you're all in favor of that.
Thank you. Anybody to speak opposed to this issue? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any conditions that we want to put on this?
It sounded like there's nothing that cries out. I mean, I think she's got the thing pretty well set up and handled. I don't know about, 8:30 seems reasonable.
The only question I had is the, the five-year term on the last variance. Typically, the board does that if we have a concern with what type of operations go in there, you know what I mean?
Just because you voted for it the last time.
But that's my only concern. I don't think, it doesn't sound like this is going to be an issue with the neighbors or anything like that, and we'd have to have them come in after five years. So that was my only comment, but.
I'm not opposed, Wendy and Bonnie.
Oh, hi, Bonnie, hi.
Can you come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please?
Bonnie Cordermanch, I live in number 14, I'm the house in front. And I've talked with Wendy, and I'm not opposed at all. I just feel like there is a lot more traffic than what we're used to. And I know you've been very respectful, but I was wondering if we could just let the folks know, because sometimes it's really just a one-way driveway, and it's, sometimes it's a little dangerous for us. Like if we're backing out and someone's coming in and someone's leaving, and they all kind of come and go at the same time. So I was wondering if like, I don't know if you guys have like a flyer that you hand out or something that you could just say, you know, the driveway, like have a speed, kind of like a speed limit? Because I know some of the moms, if they're dropping off, they like fly up the driveway, and it's been really different for us.
You didn't say the dads, though, did you?
I know, I got five, so. But I, but I'm not, and I'm not complaining, because I want, I have, I feel like we've had really good conversations and stuff, but I just think that the folks that come, that drop off, need to be reminded that we live there too. And like, sometimes they'll beep at us and we back up. Like, my husband doesn't let them go, but I do. They'll beep and like, he'll say, no, you wait. Me, it's like, I, I feel like I need to respect them, like, you know, they're more important than me, so like, I just wait for them to go. But, and that's not you, that's your guests that are coming and going, so.
And I can address that, now that I know that that's an issue, I will send an email and make sure that they know.
Like, just like an even like speed limit thing.
Yeah.
Maybe some signage?
Yeah, just a signage stake or something.
And they also don't know where the school is, so like, and I don't know, like, I know it said no signage in your paperwork, but like, it might help if there was a little sign, I don't know, so they kind of knew it wasn't. They don't come into our driveway, but you just see people circling around, like trying to figure out where it is. Like, the other night when I was taking my trash out, there was a guy who couldn't find it, I think. But, and then, you know, and then there's that concern too, like, what if my son Trey's bringing the trash cans down? I don't want someone coming flying around that corner.
Right.
My kids have waited for the bus there for years, and there's so much brush that I've always had to worry. Like, Bridge Street is a, is sometimes kind of like a speed demon road. It's a little bit dangerous. Like, people come down it, and they are not respectful of the folks going up. And then when you take that corner, it's just, it can be dangerous, like you had someone waiting there. And honestly, they don't really wait for the bus down there anymore, they just run when they know it's about to come, so I don't worry about that. But, but it's just, it's just stuff I wanted to mention, because being that house that's right in front, we are impacted, and it has changed our lives. So when Bruce, like, when Bruce had the, he just had like a little business. Like, I've lived there 17 years, so like, he had like a couple of people coming and going in the morning when June was, was running her personal trainer business. So it is a lot different for us. So, but I really just think it's the speed and people knowing that it's a one, it's a one-way road. Like, there's nowhere to pull over, you know? And like, if they just know that they should be aware that someone might be coming up the driveway, and that there is a resident there that lives on that driveway, and that's all. Other than that, I think it's awesome that you have the business, so.
I think you're an awesome neighbor, too.
And I'm honest with you, I just wanted to like, address that, because I know it's just the people coming and going, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, Bonnie. All right, so I can address that. I have, and I'm actually glad it came out in the meeting, because what I can do is convey to all my parents that our neighbor has put this on the record, and that it needs to be taken seriously, that, and that they should have priority getting in and out of the driveway, so.
And right at the corner of their driveway, you may want to put a little sign that says karate school with an arrow.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Like where you have the garden sign, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Now that I know that's an issue, I will definitely take care of that.
Okay. Jeff, do you have something to add?
Just with any signage, please consult with the building commissioner for any permitting requirements.
Okay. So, no other comments from the board? All right.
Are we going to condition it at 8:30?
I think she said she's out of there by nine. The last class is at 8:30. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I don't, I, my last class ends at 8:30.
It ends at 8:30?
She leaves at nine, but she walks to the house.
So would you be comfortable with saying that the last class would be at 8:30, end at 8:30?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so that's a condition.
Gives me a reason to go home.
Hey, anything else?
Was there any, I don't know if you have a sense in what the maximum number of pupils might be, students?
Yeah, in a given class. So I try to keep my class, I, you know, in order to teach what I teach, I don't really like large classes, so I like to keep my, I mean, probably 15 is too many for, that I, that I like to teach. I would say 12 students.
So the parents drop off, or do they sometimes wait?
Sometimes with the younger students, they wait. Most of the time, they like to drop off.
So do you want to condition it at 12 pupils per class?
Yeah.
It seems like that could be 12 ins and 12 outs then, if they drop off.
She said there's a 15-minute window.
Yeah, but I mean, if they're, if they're, if there's two, there's two, there's back-to-back, there's 24 trips for one class, and then the next class would have 24 trips potentially, if they all drop off and don't. I mean, I can't imagine someone's away on the other side of town that did go home and come back at 45 minutes, but they made, whatever.
Yeah, and usually.
You know, that's, we're just talking, you know, maybe one night, 50, 50 trips up and down that driveway. That sounds like a lot, you know, get there, but if you have 12, 12 back-to-back.
I mean, most of my classes, I have, like, when I have multiple students, it's, a lot of times it's siblings, so a lot of times.
Okay, yeah.
I could have 12 students, but only maybe five or six cars.
Okay, right, that, that's a good point.
But I mean, I think I'd like to encourage, and I do a lot with, like, I have a sign-up for people to sign up and to come to class. But I guess my concern would be, I can't really control, you know, if that 13th student comes, and it's, now I'm no longer in compliance, you know. I guess I would ask the board to consider not limiting the number and just allow me to manage, in case there would be a time that I would go over 12, you know.
I don't think it's the students, I think it's like the trips.
The trips.
I mean, I'd maybe want to push that window of 15 minutes between classes, and I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but somehow make it 20 maybe, just to give enough time for everyone to get out before the other ones come in. Because you do have a neighbor that is impacting, so to have cars going up and down, you know, something to think about, but.
Yeah.
The trips are what we're concerned with. I don't think we're concerned wholly with the students. That building can house a lot more than 12 or 13 students.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, whatever you feel, I mean, 20 minutes is very reasonable, I can easily do that.
And Ellie?
I'd just like to suggest that you encourage people to carpool. You know?
Yeah.
Or require that they carpool.
We don't get that many cars, honestly, because, like, my last class of the evening, that's my adult class, that's probably the most cars, honestly, but, because there are, those are adults, you know, so. But those classes are also small. It's, I probably have at most six adults. And most likely, that's going to be six cars. You know, but I could have, the class before that is maybe a little, you know, maybe I have probably about eight kids, but I only, they do carpool or they're related, so in that case, I maybe only have three cars.
Is that driveway lit in the winter?
Yeah, we actually have our own.
A tweet of answers.
Street light.
Darkest night all the time. I think there's a light out. Well, there used to be a light at the end of mine, like right there, but it's pitch black now.
We have a, we have a street light.
Yeah, I think so, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a long driveway.
Yeah, it is now, right, it did go in there, it's a narrow driveway, but I understand your neighbor's concern, and we wouldn't want.
Okay, so, can I just do one quick question? You haven't run this during the winter yet, have you, or?
I'm sorry?
Has this run during the winter, classes yet, or is that?
Well, it, we were running this winter, but it was pretty small. We were mostly on Zoom at that point. We've only recently started to have live classes.
Okay, no other comments, questions? So are there any conditions?
I'm sorry, did you close the public hearing yet?
No.
Okay.
I'm asking you if there were any conditions that we wanted to include with this public hearing. So far, I don't think we've had any.
No.
Well, we haven't.
8:30 would be the cutoff, yes.
Cut-off was 8:30. I guess, do we want to kind of control the traffic coming in? I don't know how we do that, that's the problem, I think.
Yeah, it's not an enforceable thing. I think the best watchdog we have is sitting right there. You can always call staff if you think it's getting out of control, but it's much easier to walk next door and have a conversation. All right. Everybody all set?
I think so.
Okay, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so now we need a motion for 12 Bridge Street for a variance from Appendix B of the Town and Westwood zoning bylaw to allow for a personal training fitness use in the RB zoning district.
So moved.
Second. Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. So the procedure is, they have 14 days to write the decision, 20 days for an appeal, and after that, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business, 28 Burn Avenue.
I thought that was the rule.
I had to buy a few months.
I know. You didn't tell them that? I'm ready for break.
Can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're up. Your name, please.
Richard and Maureen Wilsinski, and we reside at 30 Burn Ave. The house that we're looking to demolish and replace is at 28 Burn Ave, so it's our next.
So it's our next-door neighbor. We had rented previous, well, brief history, we'll make this really fast. Brief history, we, I, I bought the house that we currently live in in nineteen sixty-five. Twenty-eight Burn Ave showed up for sale, uh, about twenty.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight. I said, we have to get it, we have to get it. So we bought the thing, we rented for a few years. Now I don't want to do the rental business anymore. And I've let it go to pot, you know, it's an old camp. The, right now, the, has it rained lately? There is water that's coming through the roof. I don't plan on replacing it. I'm gonna knock that thing down and get rid of it. That's a little bit of the history. Now what we're looking for is this, is that, I know that there's a zoning bylaw that says that when you knock it down, you need to have a plan to replace it.
And it also says, and we brought this up, within a year, you have to replace it.
Correct, and what, and that's why we're here is because we would like to put that off from one year to three years. And, and one of the reasons for that? We don't know what the hell we want to do with it. We have a tentative plan that you have in the package. The plan itself will consist of, and the plot plan, I've, we went through the um, newest design, Jeff Haniford, and we came up with a plot plan that is the fullest extent of what we would like. A final plan may be a little bit less than that, but this is a maximum plan that you'd be looking at. It would be a two-story structure with a garage. Did you, did you look at some of the fine layouts that I did? Unbelievable, you know, that I, I didn't hire, it was my West, Wentworth Institute drafting class allowed me. Did you pass the class? It caused me to get a three-point-nine-eight and four-point-oh. I got a C in drafting.
You don't have to brag about that, please don't.
So this is what we're looking to do, is to put this off, and there are two reasons for putting it off, is so that we can get a final architect to do the fundamentals that you've seen in the package. And just do the details associated with that. To fine-tune it, we want to make this a retirement home. We live at twenty-eight, excuse me, at thirty. We want to do this as a retirement home so that everything is on the first floor. We put in a second floor because it doesn't make any sense to me to build, build like the rest of the community. When, when our daughter gets this, it will be more valuable than just a single-family rundown when we are gone. That's what, where our position is. Second reason for is, right now, I don't think it is an economical thing to build at this point.
No, no, no.
The cost of lumber, from what I understand, is coming down to some levels, but they're still way, way above. I've heard the, as much as thirty thousand dollars in additional lumber in building a new home. Put it off, stabilize things, and move into this thing within the next three, not in, not move into, but start the building process within the next three years. And when I get a little bit older, she stays forever young, but when I get a little bit older, what are our needs?
That's the, that's the question.
Steps, up and down, flat coming in. That's pretty much what the plan is. We will guarantee you this, that we will not go outside of that footprint. And fundamentally, what you're looking at in the package is what it will be looking like.
Okay, so, um, this is a risky, risky plan.
I agree.
So, um, the, and the risk of this. Today's bylaws are today's bylaws. Three years from now, we don't know what they could be. Town meeting can come up and say, you gotta have two acres to build over there from now on. So you, you're running a huge risk. We typically do not approve anything like this without seeing plans. Not the Wentworth kind, the real kind.
I understand.
We have to reference something to make it a legal decision. There was no septic plan included in this. Where is the septic system going to go in that footprint?
It is on file with the, it is the current septic that does exist in that piece between the street and where the garage is. The one note that, that I already know is that the tank may need to be moved. The field is fine.
So you have a title, a valid Title V.
For the old construction, correct, for the, the, the septic was replaced, I believe, in eighty-eight. And that plan is on file, I have not done a Title V. If this thing does not go through, I have no problem, I know there's risks here. I have no problem with all of a sudden, three years from now, you say, you can't do that. That's fine with me. But right now, I'd like to make sure that we can maintain and still potentially do something three years from now. It may not happen. In the meantime, what we will do is we'll knock it down, stabilize the, the property. By that, I mean, we'll loom and seed. We'll have a yard. And if that yard now lasts thirty years, we're fine with that, if, if it does get rejected.
My, my question is, what's the big hurry to crush the house?
Oh. Take a drive-by.
I did drive by.
Yeah.
Uh, it looks like a crushable house.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd have to insult you, but
No, yeah.
I, I wouldn't want to put a roof on it either. You chase the good money after bad, so. The, the demolition part I get. It's what Scott mentioned, is that, what hitches to that is, is kind of gets where it gets a little more convoluted perhaps.
Well, it's open-ended.
This is really premature.
Well, it is open-ended, but I, and again, yeah.
A little premature with the, coming, coming for the board here.
Well, can, what about just knocking it down? I mean, it's a ha-
That's not a board issue.
No.
Well, once you knock it down, you only have a year to rebuild it.
Correct.
Unless you, unless you can give us the approval.
Jeff, address that.
So, Mr. Chair, thank you. We did consult with town council because there is some specific language in our zoning bylaw. If there is a zoning board decision granting an approval, a special permit, council did believe that it was above-board, fair and proper, that if there was a special permit that explicitly addresses these issues. And remember, town meeting recently gave you the discretion to allow special permits to go as long as three years before it would lapse. You know, it, it would be legal, it would be above-board. I do want to say one other thing. I, first thing I did is I said, well, if you're looking to delay building, why not keep the structure? Because that-
That was my point.
And they, just like they just mentioned, they thought it was an eyesore, might be unsafe, liability, so be it. I said, the board will have an issue, if you just leave a gaping hole, you trade one eyesore for another. They agreed, in conversation at least, to grade it, loom and seed it, so it would not be an eyesore. And that they would, I believe, do that in a timely manner.
Oh, immediately.
For the demolition.
Yes.
We'd love to get grass in there by this fall.
You'd have a nice little yard on your side, because those two, your house and that-
Pick a little structure.
Well, yeah, how close are those houses? Look at that, twelve feet, okay, I was gonna think it was twelve feet with a fence.
Yep.
And you only have a fifty by a hundred lot.
That's right.
So you're in a little bit of a box to rebuild.
They have no problem with the neighbor on the right, that's us.
And, and the neighbors on the other side, look what they have to look at.
They'd probably prefer it's wrong to.
And they, they are all a hundred percent behind us for that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And the neighbors across the street.
Mr. Fitzgerald, did you look at the, oh, you, you're looking at the pictures.
I had the pictures, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a-
Jeff?
So this board has, on a few occasions in the past, you have preliminarily, you know, approved what plans are in the packet, and if the board did not feel the plans were quite satisfactory, you would have the applicant come back to the board at a public meeting when, once the plans were finalized and get a majority vote of the board at a public meeting to say, yes, this is consistent with what was provided to the board at the time of granting the special permit. Is the building footprint the same or less? And overall is a substantially similar in overall appearance. Now, they have some, they may not have risk from changes in zoning, if it's an existing law and it benefits from this, such a decision. But they do run the risk of, they don't know who the members of the board are going to be when they come back here.
Yeah, see all those gray hair up here?
Well, they may not be back in three years, to be honest with you.
So, really a question for Jeff, is, I mean, just sort of thinking outside the box. Is a potential solution to suggest to them that they get an attorney and the attorney draw up some kind of a document in terms of what they want, get, present that to the town to see if that's legitimate, see if it accomplishes what they want to accomplish, gives them protection for three years? With the, with the caveat they come back here, I mean, is that a possible way in either, you know, continue this evening so they could explore that?
Well, regardless of what an attorney might draw up in the here and now, if they don't act in a timely manner, I mean, it's going to be up to the future decision-making of this board.
But if, but if they had something, they, they could at least engage with the town attorney, I would assume, to see if this was a legitimate thing.
Didn't, didn't we get, you say you ran it by council and that the special permit would seem to work in-
It was.
...this proposal? You got an affirmative from him?
We did.
So I think that would cover that part of it.
Now, there is some risk in-
My recommendation is that that be in writing for, to protect, to get the best protection they could. And I appreciate nothing is guaranteed, but I think you have to have more than town council think it's, thinks it's okay.
Well, I asked for verbal opinion, they stated, matter of fact, if the board issues a special permit approving this, it's valid for the three years, notwithstanding the one-year language in the zoning bylaw. You have a lot of discretion with the grant of the special permit. And so long as it's not inconsistent.
So we're, we're just looking for a placehold right now.
Yeah, but, but remember, he said, he thinks this is approximately what he'd like, but there's still a few loose ends in terms of his replacement.
I, I think that would be his risk. If he comes back, he's got to come back here, you know, he's, he's got a loomed lot and he comes back in two years, says, on this lot, I want to do this. Then whatever board is here has to approve that. Modify it, tell them no, adjust it, diminish it in size, there's options. The board would have to, to make it fit. And again, it's a small lot and there's going to be some constrictions, but I would think, um, I think it's-
My question is, if we approve him to demolish this and give him a two-to-three-year window, I personally am not comfortable with this plan that's in front of me, leaving it open for three years. Right now, he's moving the building ten-plus feet closer to the lake. The garage is coming out an extra ten feet closer to the street. And it's just the blocks at this point. I mean, if you want to crush the house and put loom and seed, great, but this plan to approve or hold, hold over for three years. So, like Jim said, crush the house, but this plan, he's going to come back with a different plan.
Leave it with no plan?
Right.
Can, can we leave it with no plan and he comes back with a plan that-
Which I don't think you can.
He's not, he's not sure what they want, so if-
The, the issue is, if they demolish before they secure a special permit relief and they want to do a different footprint, larger footprint, different location, at some point, once they demolish that, if they don't move swiftly, they're going to lose the benefit of that existing structure.
Right, but for how long do they have?
Well, once they, I think once they demolish it, that starts the clock. It could be one year, it could be two years for a cessation of, the bylaw actually indicates you should do it within one year.
The bylaw says one year, but then-
But if they don't act, they would have to act more quickly, actually, with the scenario that you're saying, and they'd have to come back to this board or a future board without having the benefit of the existing structure in place when they make their application. They'd be making an after-the-fact application when there's no longer a structure.
This, the bylaw says reconstruction completed within twelve months after the demolition.
Right.
So that's a tight, that's a tight, that's a lot tighter than what they're asking for, so.
But I guess, can I ask a quick? By voting on the special permit, we're not voting on the variances that they're asking for here now, right? On the plan?
They're looking, I thought they were looking for a special permit to demolish and construct on the lot. And at this point, they're committing to a maximum building footprint. They certainly would like the discretion to go to a, a smaller building footprint without the need to come back to the board through a public hearing. And I think they've indicated two-story. And that at this point, they would come back to the board with plans that has to get approved by a majority of the board before they can make a building permit application. I think that's your ask.
Correct. If we approve, we just add that as conditions then.
Right, I mean, which you've done for other-
Right.
So are we voting on the extension of, from existing to what they're proposing?
They, at this point, the application is asking for that maximum building envelope.
So do you, how big a structure, footprint-wise, you can get on this lot?
It's shown right there.
That, you, someone has figured this out for you?
I, in consulting with the, the Buildings Department, you know, Henry Fontaine, talking with Mr. Morissette, and talking with, well, Matt, but Matt Salem was more on the Concon, we, we were told that we could extend the envelope of that building from the deck, the steps on the deck to the steps on the side and make it square from there. The reason why is that angular cut on the top left as we look at it.
Yeah.
For that is to maintain the eighteen-foot that is currently to the lake. You don't want to go any closer to the lake than what currently exists. And going from there, going straight across to our house over on the right side, that, that now becomes many more feet than is necessary for the twenty-five feet to the lake. Matter of fact, it's more like forty feet from the corner of that, the, the existing structure to where the lake is.
And so where is the proposed septic system going to be, do you know?
Yes, I do, it's, it's on the front, see where the garage is? The septic system is in that front yard, on the, on the yard on the front.
And are you going to put a new system in or use the existing?
The existing system is now structured for, I don't know what the coating is so you can drive over the top of it, whatever.
H-twenty, I think.
H-twenty.
Thank you. It, it, so that you can drive over the top of it.
Because you don't have a valid Title V right now.
We have not done a, a Title V at this point in time because of the fact we didn't know whether we were going to get approvals or not for this. I don't want to go spending money where I don't need to spend the money. If, if it does, if I can't do the septic system, I'll replace the septic system.
Yeah, but see, that's another whole can of worms that if you replace the septic system and it takes up more space than you think, then this footprint is going to shrink.
And, I, I agree, it would. And I, it is not, that would be a maximum foot, right now, the only thing that needs to be done with the septic, according to Jeff Haniford, the, you know, the planner, he says that the septic tank may have to be moved back towards the street by feet.
Jeff?
So just maybe to simplify things, you don't have to solve the Health Department's problems for signing a septic system. They have to review and approve it as part of any building permit process. So if satisfying their requirements ends up cutting into the building envelope that they're proposing, so be it, they'd have a smaller building.
Yeah, we'll lose our garage and I'll be very sad.
But what's your, what's your intent with the house you own when you do this? We have a daughter. So she's going to end up living there?
Yes, she is.
Have you thought, maybe it's a way out from my field, an ADU on that piece of, can, on that piece, to, to be the property? We don't get- Doing an ADU on your house? ADU, I'm not sure what the terminology means. accessory dwelling? Add, add on to that? We have thought about that. She would like to have a-
She's only twelve feet away anyway, you can't get close to her. She doesn't want us attached necessarily.
Tight there anyway. That's a possibility, you know, and all of these, but right now, the most economical thing for us as a family is to have two dwellings as opposed to one dwelling with a living apartment.
More economical, I'm not sure.
Money-wise, when it comes to her selling those down the road, she is our only heir. What, what would you get more money for, just one house with- What you're saying, yes, okay, okay.
It's an economic thing.
I'm sorry, I thought, think economically. Now I get it, I get it, I'm sorry, yep. That, that's, that's also a valid point, which is more economical to have, yeah, you're right. It is more economical to have a single house on the lake for sale, yeah.
Um, is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this? Anybody to speak opposing this? Seeing on both sides. What's the pleasure of the board, as Mr. Herman would say?
I feel I've got a valid plan and it's a little sketchy. This is black or white, can we just give them, they're looking for some gray and-
They have to come back with certified plans when, when the time approaches in that three-year period. They have some, you know, they have some marks that they have to hit for us, for us to go forward with it.
And if it doesn't go, they've, they've said, they're, they're, they'll be content with not being able to build anything if, if that's the outcome. with not being able to build anything if, if that's the outcome. Have a much more valuable piece of property in the other house with that side lot, for sure.
You got that in the record?
Minutes taker, I'm sure will capture that. Thank you, Dana.
Because, three years from now, we're gonna be sitting here saying, "What did they say?"
So, is he, are they starting in three years, or they have to be finished in three years?
So, so they would have to start to exercise their approval within three years of the end of the 20-day appeal period. So, they'd have to apply for a building permit before that lapses, which means they would have to, I'm guessing, come back to this board with a, a completed set of plans prepared by qualified professionals that they could then get a majority blessing before they file with the building commissioner.
They have to back, by June of that year.
And if they don't, if they do not come back within that three-year window, then they are at, they would be at serious risk, 'cause they don't know what a board, close to three years from now, if they would entertain the thought of an extension, or if they even would find finalized plans consistent with what you might approve tonight. So, they have some risk.
So, what if this board doesn't like their plans when they come back?
Well, that's a problem for...
Them.
That's the rule, I say.
That's our risk, and we understand that.
Come in saying they're willing to take the risk, so, it's on them.
And we will come back, if we do decide, what, when we decide, within the three years, we will come back with some bona fide certified architectural designs, 'cause I have some serious concerns. I know what I want, and I'll tell the architect exactly what I want, but it, it, shut up, Molly.
So, at this point, one of the conditions is, is that this will have to be loomed and seeded and maintained.
We should see.
I assume the intent is to grade it level, so there's no gaping hole in the land.
Grade it level.
Oh, yeah.
There's no basement in this house now, right? So, that shouldn't be a difficult thing to fill in.
So, the other condition that we put on a tear-down is that the debris has to be removed in 30 days?
Oh, yeah, we, we already know who...
Says that, no problem.
Well, we already...
Hear that a lot, no problem.
We've already, we've already talked to somebody about it.
Okay.
And, and he's the one who actually...
Two dumpsters.
Who, who replaced our septic system at the, at our current location at 30. He's extremely, I trust him, he's good, he's quick, reasonable.
Okay.
Asphalt staying? The driveway gonna stay, or do they have to loom and seed that?
We're gonna pull up all of that asphalt. The, the current asphalt that is there will be removed.
So, you're gonna strip this lot right down, and then loom and seed every, so have a 50 by 100 lawn, is what you're gonna have?
Lot of...
Yeah, we'll have great...
That is a road in tending.
I, I wanna keep that.
I know.
The fence is gonna stay up? The fence will stay up?
The fence between the two houses.
I, I might modify it, because I, there's, what I'll do is, I'll take down half of it, and I'll use that for, like, storage, 'cause right now, there's air conditioning units that are inside there, so I'll take down, you're talking no fence between the two houses?
Yes.
I'll take down half of it, so that one half will stay up.
Which half?
The ones attached to my house, to the place where we live, 20, uh, 30.
Where is it attached?
To each house.
That was a straight fence, and maybe I'm wrong.
Oh, you're talking about on the left side? You might be talking on the left side of the house. That right there?
Yeah.
That, that right there is attached to the, where we live.
So, I just want the board to be careful, even though they're the same property owner, only one subject properties before the board's jurisdiction tonight?
Look, I was kinda kidding, we're gonna maintain two apartments.
I'm gonna certainly take down the half that is on the property of 28.
Okay, okay.
'Cause we, we're on the lake, and we don't want the air conditioning units, we have two of them in there, to be seen from the lake, you know, it's, keep the fence up.
When they do come back, are they gonna have to have certified plans?
Yes, yes, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yep. So, any other comment or questions for the board?
No.
So, if we have a motion to close this public hearing?
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, board members, we are looking for a variance to allow for the reconstruction of a non-conforming dwelling with a larger footprint.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, was that a special permit?
A, a special, yes, you're correct. I'm reading the wrong piece of paper. A special permit, and I think that the record should reflect that we have spoken to town council, the three-year window appears to be fine legally with him, and the conditions that we've spoken about. Anything else?
We'll look at, yeah, just demolition, 30 days and then 30 days, right?
Yep.
Is how long till the lot has to be put in after the demolition stuff?
Can we say not later than the end of the, whatever the next growing season is?
Yes.
Or this growing season?
This fall, probably.
Well, it depends. They may be subject to, as sad as this is, the structure may be subject to demolition delay and other things, and other departments, so I don't know how timely, in addition to that, they probably have to also go to Conservation Commission before they can do any construction activities, so I can't honestly tell you what growing season, dry though, they might, might hit with, so.
So, you're suggesting that it be a year from this fall?
No, I'm just suggesting we just say first available growing season upon demolition.
Okay.
If that is satisfactory for the board.
That sounds accurate.
You got all that?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I also vote in the affirmative.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't capture the motion maker. We're second on that.
Jimmy made the motion, Jim seconded.
I seconded.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got what you're asking for, I hope it's the right thing.
It's better than where we, where we want to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's not gonna go on us in three years.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 469 Groton Road, Warren Soulet, for an ADU to create a situation of a 15% increase in the gross floor space of a structure. Before we get started, Jeff and I have talked about this a little bit, and we won't get into it tonight, but this is clearly one of the bylaws in town that we need to address because there's a whole group of people in town who have small and modest homes that need to put an ADU in, and they're getting cheated because of this particular bylaw, because of the percentages. So, we don't have the answer, but I think it's something that, it's my goal, in the calendar year, that this is gonna be the one issue that we'll address and hopefully change this bylaw, so that, you know, everybody can be treated fairly and equally, size-wise, when it comes to these ADUs. So, after now, I've said my little spiel, do we have a motion to open the public hearings?
Some more.
Second. Mr. Olet, you're up.
Hello, everyone, thanks, thanks so much for taking the time to consider this. I'm Larry Willett, and I'm at 469 Groton Road, and I've been in this house for 37 years now in Westford. It's a single-family home currently, and I'm looking to create more living space for my family by adding a, just adding onto the existing structure, a 520-foot or so addition. The current structure is about 1,700 square feet, and, single level, with the addition would be single level, and I created it to be handicapped accessible, et cetera. You know, I actually hired an architect to design this, so that the look and feel would be the same, in keeping with the existing house. And I've talked to my neighbors on the left side of me, where this would be built, and Bala and Nina, and they're, I've talked with them a couple of times about it, and they're fine with that going forward. And I think that, I've tried to take as many pictures as I can, so we can get perspective on this. And it's special thanks to everyone for helping to prepare this, it, there's a lot of information that, there's a lot of work that gets done for all these, and I do appreciate all the effort that goes into this. Special thanks to Jeff and Sierra for helping with this ahead of time, so, anyway, happy to answer any questions I can, if you have one that's...
It's good that your architect didn't go to Wentworth.
Yeah.
Plans are very well done.
Very, very well done, well laid out, all packages.
Thanks.
Very, very clear.
You just, you just made a comment, I was concerned about, you're just adding, you wanted to add on to your house for your family. Is this gonna be an ADU for a, a, a parent or a...
A family member.
A family member.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
I took a, a drive-by, and it looks like you got plenty of room, and it, the lot looks very accommodating to your request, so, and I, the plans look very clear, so I have no issue with it.
Not a great plan.
Yeah, I agree with Scott, it's just, it's unfortunate that the way that ADU lawyers are in the...
15% wouldn't give you sufficient, give you a large closet, yeah, that's not, that is, that is an issue.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this proposal?
In favor.
Okay, can we have your name for the record?
Alisa McCaffrey.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody opposed to this project? Seeing none. As a board prepared to vote?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we are here tonight to issue a variance. Jeff?
Yes, a variance and a special permit, and we would ask that the board first act on the variance petition before the special permit.
Well, the variance is for the ADU?
The variance is for the more than 15% increase.
More than 15%, so, do we have a motion to act on a variance for more than a 15% increase in gross floor space?
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I have also voted in affirmative. And now, we, oh, need to issue a special permit to allow for the construction of an attached dwelling unit known as an ADU. Motion?
Some more.
Second. Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I also vote in the affirmative. So, you're all set, they have 14 days to write the decision, 20 days for an appeal, and at that point, take off the hammer and start banging. Thanks so much, everyone. Good luck. Really welcome. Good luck.
I did, I used two sides, do you like that? That is recycling, repurpose.
Pretty tall.
I saw Carrie and, um...
How come you didn't get top billing?
Hmm?
How come you didn't get top billing?
I don't know, I should've advocated and to be taken out of order here.
Jeff, you can leave, Shova. Wanna give that back to Melissa? Subdivision plan for Anna Theresa. All right, okay, we're here tonight to 6 Fletcher Lane, allow for the division of one lot into a total of two conforming lots that result in a rear yard setback of 16 feet on one of the existing lots. I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Some more.
All those in favor? Aye. You're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, for the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell and Robbins. Also with me tonight is Dennis Lecombe, who's sitting right next to me, Bobby Lecombe, who's in the back, and Carrie Hilberg. They're the trustees of the Robert J. Lecombe Family Trust. Recently, the children of the Robert J. Lecombe Family Trust decided to subdivide the property out on Nabnassak Lake, which is what you can see on the plan in your packet and behind you and around you, actually. The subdivision will subdivide the property into two conforming lots. One will contain the existing residential structure, the larger structure, and the other will contain the accessory structure, which right now is the garage. Both the lots are 100% conforming. The intention is to convert that accessory garage into a residential structure, and the intention of the subdivision is to convey that lot to Carrie, the converted accessory structure. Although the lot is 100% compliant, when we actually subdivide the lot, this structure becomes the rear to the existing structure, so we do not comply to the rear yard setback of 30 feet. We only have 20 feet to the structure and 16 feet to the roof line. The existing square foot footage of that accessory structure is approximately 2,400 square feet. They're only doing a very small add-on, as the total square footage of the new structure is 2,570 square feet. I say new structure, but as you can see from the plan, there's only two small bumpouts, one in the rear where you see proposed addition, and that's the actual entrance to the property, and one to the front where it says proposed addition, and that's a small sunroom. No new construction whatsoever will impact the rear yard setback. As you may know about many lots in this area, including this lot, this lot has a hardship owing to the soil shape and topography, much due to the wetland setback from Nabnassak Lake. Although you can't see it on this plan, I did put another plan in your packet, which is unique to this lot, I think, or unique to many lots on Nab Lake, that there's actually a pretty good tree buffer that goes from the front of the lakefront on the left-hand side up towards the property, mature growth. If this project had to be brought into conformance with the zoning bylaw, what would happen, as you can see, is the structure would not only have to move over, but it would also have to move up towards the resource area. This would not only impact the trees, but it would impact the abutters, it would impact the view shed, and it would change the configuration of the lot. Clearly, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would be a substantial detriment to this family. This, this structure would have to be knocked down. Larger structure could be constructed on that lot closer to the waterfront, but it would be a substantial detriment, not only to the lot, I think, and the impact to the resources and the existing tree line there, but also to the abutters. And I think that goes a long way, but by saying the petition can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, as every direct abutter signed off in a letter that's in your packet agreeing that there was no impact whatsoever to allowing this variance. The only thing that is impacted by this variance is other family property. And I think you probably will ask me the question, what happens when it's not family property, and somebody wants to build something bigger here? We would agree to a condition as part of this variance application, that if this property was ever demolished, this structure, that the new structure would have to comply with all current setbacks of zoning at the time.
The existing garage you're speaking of?
Yes, the accessory structure. If it were ever, 'cause that's the only structure we need relief for. The family structure, that the larger structure complies, the accessory structure we're trying to keep has the rear yard setback issue. So, if we ever demolish that for any reason, we would have to comply with the then-current dimensional setbacks for the lot.
Or to go back to the board?
Beg your pardon?
Or to go back to the board.
Or to come back to the board for relief, but we're not, we're not looking to greatly expand the structure, we're not trying to make just a variance so we can build another megastructure. Honestly, the intention is to do these small add-ons and for Carrie to move in, and not to have a hu- huge impact to the neighborhood, and keep the structures as it is today. Happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding this variance application.
I think, I mean, I did also take a drive down there to a beautiful piece of property, and the structures are compatible with each other, it's obviously part of the same construction process, and, I mean, plans are very detailed, and it's also, I think it's always an advantage to this board, 18 abutters supporting this, I mean, not even any controversy on that, so I think that's, that's a significant factor.
It's a testament to your parents.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I remember when the property was empty, and you guys know, it's just a beautiful spot, yes, really showcased on the lake. Are you gonna, the driveway, the existing driveway will come from, you want, the front won't come, the driveway will come off?
The new driveway will come off of Pollyanna.
It will come off of Pollyanna. Okay.
So, it'll be the legal address, then?
So it'll be the legal address, yes?
Yes, it will. Yeah, this is kind of a rare thing for us, where we're actually trying to save a building as opposed to tear a building down.
Yeah.
Save a nice building. Yeah. Make a nice structure.
You had good taste.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this proposal?
Small in favor.
Name to the record, please, sir.
Dean Darty.
Thank you. Anybody to speak in opposition to this proposal? Seeing none.
Assume you guys are all set on the septic part, huh?
Yes, sir. So the joke for the audience is they're in the septic business. Okay. No other comments from the board?
No, straightforward.
Seeing none, okay, may we, are there any, there's no conditions that we need, correct?
I don't see, I don't see any.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to accept the volunteered condition of approval, that if the garage structure got torn down?
Yep, we can do that.
And then just one point of clarification, there was no subdivision.
By dividing the lots.
That's it.
So today.
Property.
Just for clarity, the general property data shows all of the land with one structure and no land with the second structure. I'm not sure I understand that.
Right now, it's all, we haven't completed the subdivision plan yet because we needed to get the variance first. We haven't completed the plan, the.
Approval not required plan.
I'm sorry, I keep calling it a subdivision, but it is just an approval not required plan because the lots themselves meet a hundred percent of all the dimensional requirements in the town of Westford.
But it's, but it isn't lots today, it's lot, A lot.
A lot. And with this relief, now we can go, we will take a plan to the planning board. I think the planning board's signature block is actually on one of the plan sets.
I think they already, for the record, the planning board already.
Endorsed.
Gave the authority for staff to endorse the A and R plan on their behalf. However, we advised them of the zoning issue, and staff was given latitude if they could secure the zoning relief and still move forward on the A and R plan without having to go back to the planning board again.
Right.
So if this decision goes through, they already have an A and R plan, I would be able to endorse it for the planning board.
And then it would go on record, and then it would, then you would see two lots.
Two lots.
Yes, on the assessors card.
And so when it was done and done, so you'd show land with the second one?
Yes. Well, there's just one lot now, so.
It's just an accessory structure now to accommodate the one lot.
Just, I mean, this is, I've never seen this before. It's just, I've never seen a property card with no property.
Well, I did not examine in detail that, that property record card, but rest assured, once the A and R gets recorded at the registry of deeds, that will trigger the assessing department to review and update. And particularly, once they security building permits to do the improvements to the garage, that will also trigger their review to update their property record card. So we can, we can double check on that, but that's not a, it's not a zoning board issue.
You all set, Dave?
Yeah, I'm not, okay, I'm just.
Can I ask a quick question? Emily Taylor, Nine Texas Road. I see that, I think you talked about a deck being built, and I'm just wondering if there will be any tree clearing or cutting?
No. No, the proposal is to keep all of the trees. That's one of the actually benefits of keeping the structure in that location.
Yeah. Can that be part of the conditions? I don't know if that is something you guys can add, but that might be a nice thing to require.
Have a problem with that?
No.
Thank you.
That's, you can change it and wind down.
So just to be clear, no trees are to be removed in connection with the construction?
With the construction, okay. There might be, just in that strip there, there might be a little bit just to widen the driveway to go in there.
Right, but the large portion that's waterfront is, substantial amount of the trees are all going to stay, and I don't actually think that tree, what is the width of that tree?
Yeah, no, that's just, it's stuff that's just kind of grown in, saplings that have grown in through the year, so they're.
And I don't want to create an issue. What about the new driveway?
Just, that's what I'm saying, just in order to widen.
There's undergrowth in that area.
Yeah.
Right.
We do have to do a little bit.
Nothing over eight inches, nothing eight inches more in diameter.
Is there a reason?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, is the board all set to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are looking for a variance to allow for the division of one lot into two conforming lots that will result in a rear yard setback of sixteen feet on one of the lots, the existing garage compared to a dwelling where thirty feet is required. Someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I also vote me affirmative.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Good luck, guys.
Hi, Melissa.
Come on, what a great guy.
Everybody up in that hallway all set, Jeff?
Yes, sir, I let them know that you'll give folks a chance to cycle in and out.
Absolutely. Okay, the next item is 151 Littleton Road, McDonald's. And I just wanted to mention before we start that we are all aware of the town meeting vote that just happened. Past town meeting, and that was to create an overlay district for drive-through. That is not why we're here tonight. We are here addressing one issue for a drive-through at 151 Littleton Road. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members.
Hang on one minute, we're gonna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We received, as you know, a lot of public comments. There were a lot of questions and/or suggestions raised. I just thought it might be helpful to just lay or explain a few things to some of the public who may not be as familiar with the process, so you understand what the board is looking at doing tonight. So first of all, as you know, our zoning bylaw does prohibit drive-throughs for restaurant facilities. That is very clear. However, another section of our zoning bylaw, section nine, point two, point two, it does give the zoning board the authority to potentially grant a use variance to allow a user activity that is not otherwise allowed in the zoning bylaw. And so the applicant has filed for such a request. There were a lot of suggestions that the board should simply dismiss and not even hear this petition, but the board is actually obligated to hold a public hearing. And in fact, if they did not hold a public hearing within a timely manner and issue a decision, the petition would actually be considered approved. So the board must hold a public hearing, and in order for the board to consider granting a use variance, they must go through three very specific variance criteria. And they must convince four out of five of the seated members of the zoning board of appeals that they have satisfied all three of the variance criteria to their satisfaction before they can think about granting a variance. So I hope that gives you some background. They really don't have discretion, they have to have this public hearing. If they did not, well, they should really have a public hearing, so. Sure, and actually, in the interest of saving time, I know the applicant is going to march through those three criteria, and we're happy to share that with you. And so that's just some of the process, so you have some background. So thank you for indulging, Mr. Chair.
So the audience is aware, the five seated members tonight, Scott Fitzgerald, James Kuzinyak, Scott McKay, Janice, and Paul McMillan. Now you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, planning staff. For the record, my name is Leah Rubega, and I'm an attorney with Hinckley Allen located at 28 State Street. Here with me is Eric DeBruel from Bowler Engineer, and Donnie Wright, who is the president of KB Management, which is the local business operator and franchisee of the location. I appreciate planning's effort to explain the overall process and why we are here tonight. It takes the load off of my shoulders, which I greatly appreciate. Given the hour of the hearing, I'm going to try to be brief, but I do want to build a substantial record, and I would also like, at the very front end of things, to respectfully request time to respond to public comment at the end. So jumping through, as planning staff indicated, we're here tonight for a use variance, and the state statute as well as the local municipality regulations are clear that this board has the authority to issue a use variance if it satisfies three criteria. If you wouldn't mind going to the second slide, just so they have the three criteria. These are very specific, narrowly tailored criteria that an applicant has to show that they meet each standard in order to establish a use variance may be granted. And shifting to the specifics of the project before you, given obviously the last year of the pandemic and the significant impacts of it, it has changed the scope of the way we do business. And I know all of us, both personally and professionally, have experienced significant impacts from the pandemic, again, both personally and professionally, so I'm not going to sit here and drone on about those, but it really has shifted the way we live, the way we operate, the way we do business, and the way we buy our retail. And the implications of the pandemic have been real and will have real and everlasting impacts as far as how customers are going to do business and shop. And in full transparency, that is one of the reasons we are here before you requesting this use variance. The drive-through use will help protect both customers and the employees alike by providing an alternative to having to go into the store and have physical contact with other patrons as well as the employees. As we emerge from the pandemic, and I am here, and I'm sure everyone in this room feels the same way, I hope that we never experience anything like we have, given the past year and a half. But the reality of the situation is, again, it has shifted the way we operate, the way we see the world, the way we act and consume goods. So it is, it is, I'm sure, going to be an everlasting shift in business as we know it. And I can talk from experience and conversing with family and friends, while some members of the public will feel comfortable resuming business as usual, going into stores and restaurants, there is going to be a significant demographic, an older population, those with children, those who are susceptible and may suffer from health conditions, that are going to be hesitant to resume business as usual and going into stores. Now, I know these considerations are not unique to this specific business, and when Donnie comes up in just a moment and explains what he and the employees have experienced in the last year, I do recognize that that is an experience that universally businesses in Westford as well as across the country have experienced. However, those specific impacts and change in business, as well as the unique considerations specific to this property, are what allow and afford this board to grant a use variance. So diving right into the variance standards, the first one is circumstances relating to the soil shape or topography of land or structures, and especially affecting such land, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, exist at the property. And if you could actually go to the next slide, thank you. So this, this parcel of property is truly unique to the zoning district. As you can see, it is labeled in yellow, that's the parameters of the property. The actual facility restaurant is located in the bottom right section of the property, and a substantial amount of the property is consumed by wetlands, so ultimately is undevelopable for the future. And as a result, the property owner cannot expand its use in the event it needed to utilize additional parking, for example, for delivery to cars for food pickup. In addition, because it's located in the Zone Three Water Resource Protection Overlay District, it's subject to additional restrictions and conditions that are not universally applied to all of the properties in the zoning district. In addition, as you are probably aware, this property is located very closely off the highway, so there is a good chance that a substantial portion of the patrons are actually not residents in town, but are patrons passing through, whether it be from other towns or other states. And again, really, given the unique soil and shape of the property, it really sets it apart from any other property in the district, in addition to the fact that it is one of the only standalone restaurant businesses, if not the only standalone restaurant businesses in the commercial highway district. Moving to the, the second criteria, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. As minimal contact and social distancing measures continue to be important, and as customers need that safety aspect of minimizing contact at their discretion, the drive-through is crucial in providing that option, again, to minimize and have customers efficiently move through the property with the drive-through use. And again, this, as I just mentioned, is crucial in its distance in relation to 495 and the fact that a good portion of its patrons are probably coming from elsewhere, just as far as we've learned of the past year, contact tracing and exposure and things of that nature. The applicant's improvements proposed for the drive-through will improve the efficiency of the restaurant. So essentially, the literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw preventing the drive-through at this property eliminates the safe option, again, for both patrons and employees to minimize their exposure, resulting in a substantial hardship for the applicant, again, financial and otherwise. In addition, as, as one resident actually pointed out in a letter submitted to the board, as we've seen over the past year and a half, restaurant businesses have resorted to take-out delivery and delivering food to passengers in cars outside of the building. So it's clear that there is a shift to moving the transportation or moving the delivery of food and goods to outside of the building to allow customers to have this comfort and distance from actually going into the store. So the next step inevitably would probably be that a lot of businesses are going to start looking to expand their parking areas and how they use their parking areas to afford for this sort of take-out delivery option, and for the reasons that I mentioned about the soil, the wetlands, and the shape of the property, the applicant is not as able to accommodate these shifting practices. And then finally, the third criteria is that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying intent or purpose of the bylaw. So regarding the first component, the public good component, I'll point to section 1.3 of the zoning regulations, which essentially state that the bylaw is enacted to promote among other goals the following: to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, flood, and other dangers, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town, and to lessen congestion in the street. And for all the reasons that I stated about the unique shape and location of the property, given the wetlands, given the substantial buffer that long-term and potentially forever will prevent any commercial use or building being erected to, at least on two sides of the property, really insulate this property as far as being able to promote the drive-through in a safe and in a way that will not have an impact on traffic. And again, and again, as I previously stated, this is a standalone building on the property, and it is a longer, where the area can be developed, it's a longer area of the property, which really helps with queuing of cars, so there will be no queuing out onto the road. In addition, this property is uniquely situated because it has a light intersection right at its entrance and exit, so it does afford for the efficient flow of vehicles. Regarding the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws, the restaurant use in the commercial highway is permitted as of right, and drive-through uses, as I'm sure you know, are permitted by special permit in the commercial highway, except drive-through uses for restaurants. So right there, there's an inherent acknowledgement that drive-through uses are not universally that drive-through uses are not universally prohibited across town. It's specific to the restaurant use. And in some ways, I would argue that the drive-through aspect is really an accessory use to the primary use, which, again, the restaurant use is permitted as of right. And then again, I would just point to the fact that, as the past year and a half has shown us and how restaurants have adapted, there is an increase in a likelihood push of delivery of takeout foods to individuals sitting in cars. And I know a lot of worries and concerns were brought up about the traffic, about car emissions, about trash. And I would argue that delivering service or delivering food to patrons sitting in their cars waiting idly is perhaps more detrimental than the efficient drive-through operation that we are proposing for this location. So to summarize briefly, and then I will ask Eric to say a few words and Donnie as well. What we've requested here tonight is ultimately a use variance, and we believe that our application satisfies all of these three use variance standards. And again, this is something where the residents in their letters, and I'm sure will get up here and say tonight, the question will be raised, if you grant a use variance for this applicant, who's to say that it's not going to open the floodgates? And everyone's going to be in here. And that may be the case. Other restaurants may be coming in with variance applications. But it is very clear and very specific that each applicant has to satisfy these three standards in a way that is acceptable to this board. And I believe that, given the unique soil and shape conditions of the property, as well as the other considerations that I've outlined here tonight and that we have set forth in our application package, this property is uniquely and narrowly tailored to satisfy all three of these variance standards. And with that, I know the purview of this board really is just to review the use standards or the use variance and the applicable standards. But I know that there were a number of concerns raised regarding queuing, regarding the actual drive-through facility. So if this board would permit, I would ask Eric DeBruel from Bowler Engineer to say a few words just as far as how the overall drive-through facility works, as I do believe there are some misconceptions as to what we are proposing for the drive-through. So if you may.
Hey, Eric.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Eric DeBruel, Bowler Engineering. So just take a moment to explain, under the existing conditions, obviously, we've got an existing 4,300-square-foot quick-serve restaurant. It's been in existence. It's served by a full-access driveway off of Littleton Street.
Road.
Littleton Road, rather. Site plan. The circulation onsite today is counterclockwise in one direction. And the site is served by about 71 parking spaces. What McDonald's is proposing, obviously, is a drive-through facility. What that is comprised of, thank you. What that is comprised of is several menu boards and speakers and a drive-through window that you would pay for your order and a second drive-through window where you would pick up your order. The way the drive-through functions, again, under distant conditions, it's counterclockwise circulation. So the existing site circulation will be unchanged. It'll just be intuitively the same as what customers are used to today. Since you would enter that drive-through, you'd have an option to either take one of two lanes. And the idea behind having a two-lane or two-order-point drive-through is that traditional drive-throughs with one order point can tend to back up because you have no way to bypass that order. Someone's making a special order, and if it's starting to queue back, you're just stuck waiting for that customer to make that order. What McDonald's has been very successful doing at other locations is adding a second order point. So on that outside, you would have, again, a second place to make your order. And again, that ensures the most optimum and efficient way to make your order so that McDonald's can take in the order and then prepare the food. All of that is to really just limit the potential for stacking back behind those order points. The proposed drive-through reduced the parking by about 12 parking spaces, but we're still fully compliant with the minimum parking requirement and would require just relocating and rebuilding an existing trash enclosure further back into the site. All of the work that would be proposed is inside the existing developed area, so we're not going outside of the expanse of the existing pavement area. And really would be a fairly limited construction effort for them to get it done. The actual drive-through equipment, I just want to take a minute to talk about that, just so we understand what it is. Again, there would be speakers, obviously, with the drive-through component where you're making your order. Those speakers would be facing, they're at the rear of the site, obviously, and facing towards the back of the site. So those would be facing essentially woods, wetlands, and eventually 495. So, so as I say.
Diane?
Could you please speak up, tell us in the back end here as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Use your outdoor voice.
Outdoor voice. So to summarize the way the speakers are working, essentially, they've got technology where if there are ambient noises going on, so during the day, if it's a little bit noisier on Littleton Road, that the speaker would be set at a certain level. During the evening hours, it would self-adjust down so that we don't have any, you know, noise kind of going off property. Similar, the technology of the menu boards, they're also facing towards the rear and off property, towards the woods and wetlands and 495. But it's an LED technology similar to your iPhone. If it's right outside, the screens would be bright. And during the evening hours, they would darken so that, again, we don't have light trespass going off property. Do believe we had some communication with fire and police. They had no comments relative to any concerns with the onsite circulation. And I think fire is actually in agreeance that this would actually be a net benefit because we're actually creating some additional circulation around the rear of their site for their fire truck apparatus. I think that's just really the high level. Certainly, you can go into any more detail or answer any questions as needed.
Why she's so walking up to the microphone?
Yes, and this is Donnie Wright. As I mentioned earlier, he's the president of KB Management, which is the local business operator of the facility. And I'll hand it over to Donnie.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Donnie Wright, president, COO of JBK Management. My mother Paula Wright is back there. She is the CEO. Because I'm the son, I operate, she, executives. But she's the boss, let's get that right, all right?
Good.
So I just wanted to tell you guys a little history. This is a family-owned business. We've been in operation since 1985. We began with one restaurant, Causeway Street, crossing the Boston Garden, back in the day, and have since grown and moved out to the suburbs, which I have been born and raised in Sudbury. Still live there to this day, and my mother as well. This year has been an extremely interesting year for our business, our organization, and all of our people and our staff that work in the restaurants pertaining to this particular location. We had to close the restaurant for approximately two months due to downward turn with sales. And to financially keep this operation running in Westford, took a significant impact in our overall business. So to, you know, cut the losses, we had to shut down. We had to furlough 33 of our 35 employees. We were able to relocate a couple of them. Since then, we have gotten our staff back up to 32 employees, but it took a significant impact over the year to get us back to where we were. I'll call it pre-pandemic. This site is a unique location. There are not many non-drive-through McDonald's around the country. I'll just give you a little peek at other restaurants that are drive-through or have drive-through capabilities. They operate typically between 68% to 72% of the business is through the drive-through. So a significant majority of the business is through the drive-through. Fortunately, at this location, the building is set up to have a drive-through. Obviously, we haven't been able to use that, utilize that. But that would significantly help us financially in the future if this happens again, which I hope doesn't. But this significantly impacts our financial situation in this restaurant. If we did not own other restaurants and we only owned this Westford location, we would have closed that day that we closed during the pandemic, and we would not have been able to open. So it's just, it's part of our business to have the drive-through, to be able to serve our customers in various ways, whether it's delivery, in-store, drive-through, curbside. But the drive-through is a major opportunity and a major access for our customers, for us to serve them the way that they want to be served. So I will, I'll keep this short because I know I haven't eaten dinner. You guys probably haven't eaten dinner.
Could've brought us a Big Mac.
Yeah.
I should have had them right then, guys, you know? But I thank you, gentlemen, for hearing us out, for showing up, because I know you're passionate about your town as I am about my restaurants and my people that work in them. So I thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess I will start. So I want to go back and just talk a little bit about the uniqueness of this spot. You didn't really do your homework. There are six other freestanding restaurants in Westford out of a dozen of 15 restaurants that there are. There's probably another 12 buildings in Westford that are freestanding that would be potential drive-through spots if they needed to be. So I don't think that that uniqueness is something that's going to meet the criterion. In your information that you gave us, you said that roughly, in that, I called it a 90-day period, there was about 68,000 customers. And in my simple mind, I did some math, that's 750 days, 62 per hour. So there was a reason when you got this permit to build that restaurant that they wanted you to have 71 parking spots, even though you only needed 24 under the law. Someone must have had some smarts and said, hey, you know, you get 62 people per hour, you can't make it on 24 parking spots. So losing more parking, I think, is going to be a serious issue. And so the other day, just for curiosity's sake, I drove in the parking lot. And I happen to drive a big boat, a Suburban. And so I kind of drove around a couple of times, kind of see turning radiuses and everything. And I kind of, once again, in my simple mind, figured out that the building's about 100 feet long. And if an average car is 16 feet, that's only going to give you six cars before you're out on 110. So at 62 per hour, six cars, do the math, it's not that difficult. The other thing that I was concerned about is the fire lane that wraps this building. Once again, the planning board put that there for a reason. And I think, you know, that has to be looked at also. And so I guess that one question I have is, right now, you have 32 employees. If you go to a drive-through system, are you going to add employees or take away employees?
So our average restaurant that has a drive-through, we have 45 to 55 employees.
Okay.
Okay.
Maynard.
Before we get out of here, address the chair for a question. So the question that I asked was, under this scenario now, they have 32 as a walk-in restaurant. If they go to a drive-through, your answer was?
45 to 55 employees.
Jeff?
Clarification, are you saying total employees employed there at that site or at any, maximum at any one time physically in?
No, 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 at that entire site. So on, so for clarification, for example, from 11 or 11 to 1, we would probably typically have anywhere from 12 to 15 employees in the restaurant. Overall staff size, we would have 45 to 55 employees employed. So currently, we have 32 employees employed at that location. So for, I'll give you a comparison. For lunchtime at Westford McDonald's, you can have anywhere from, right now, five to eight, nine employees working during the peak hour.
Okay. So the other thing that I noticed too is when I drove around the building, you have the ordermcdonald.com signs up, and you obviously are doing curbside delivery and online delivery also.
Correct.
So it's not like that you don't have means to be able to do something for somebody that doesn't want to physically come into your restaurant.
Correct, we're trying to do everything we can to adapt to the situation.
Okay.
A question, I think, you said you've owned this since 85?
You look familiar.
Probably before 85.
No.
So is it Napoli, Carly McCoy?
Yes, so we bought that from them.
You bought that from Peter Napoli's outfit?
Correct.
In 85?
No, and so Rick McCoy sold out to Peter Napoli.
Napoli, yeah.
And then we bought it from Peter about, forgive me, about 12 years ago, 11 years ago.
Okay. So how many stores do you have?
16.
So my question, I guess, probably goes to council, is we're talking about, and I don't know, I'd ask you for your answer, if we're talking about, you know, the financial impact on the variance criteria, you own multiple locations, some are more successful and others, you have bottom feeders, you have hotspots.
Yep.
Is it one big bucket during this pandemic where your entire group is combined to survive? Does that have a financial impact on this one location?
Correct.
But obviously, my question is, does it all go together in your big?
It does. With our portfolio, and in all honesty, and this is across our co-op, which is basically Maine, I'll call it Maine to Connecticut, our organization was hit hardest just because of our mix of stores. That's no fault of anyone's, especially no one here, but I'm just giving you the lay of the land. We have special venue stores, we have non-drive-through stores, which were heavily impacted, as well as highway stores, heavily impacted, just because of commute. So we were hit harder than my other owner operators.
And if I may jump in?
Yes.
I believe the legal standard is specifically at this property.
It is, that's, I did, okay, it's at this property.
And as you mentioned earlier, if he wasn't, you know, so successful business-wise and just was a sole owner-operator of this location, the chances were that if, once he closed, he would not be reopening. So the financial hardship is very real as it is applicable to this location.
Thank you.
Any members from the board have any other comments or questions?
I have a comment, and two things. I just think feel obligated to say in behalf of, I did reach out to the director at the, for the, at the Cameron Senior Center because the Council on Aging had supported the amendment, I think by letter to Jeff, for the town meeting bylaw. And I did have any mail from the president saying that the Council on Aging does support the drive-through for the fact that it's convenient for the elderly folks. They get a good bang for their buck, they can drive through and get a coffee, there's no need to get out and follow weather, all that sort of thing. So the person that emailed me could not be here tonight, but they do, they do support it.
Derek? Yes, Scott? The profile of your business for this store, you have in-house customers, obviously, and you have pickup. Could you give me that breakdown?
So currently, well, like dine-in and take-out?
Yes.
I don't have those numbers exact. The majority is take-out. I want to say, just off the top of my head, probably 70%. And I'll call it, it was probably a little bit better pre-pandemic to say it was closer to 50/50 with the Play Place. And I didn't want to get into that. But now with the pandemic and germs and everything else, that Play Place is, you know, that business is gone. I don't know how long it's going to take to get back. I don't know, we don't even have guidelines for McDonald's yet on when we can reopen those. those and what that whole looks like. So that's a, a whole nother discussion, you know, within our organization about impact on business.
So you're, you had, you said you had 16 properties in your portfolio.
Correct.
Are there any similar to your Westford location?
Acton, which I'm sure.
Where there's no drive, where it's no drive.
Yeah. So Acton is the same, same situation, no Play Place, no drive-through. And in a, I'll call it a worse situation, signage, which I don't even want to talk about signage, very minimal signage there. So you, people drive by it because they think it's a colonial house. Yeah. So, but to your point, there, there is a similarity, same thing, we had to close for actually more than two months. And to reopen and get back to normal, we're still not back to regular operating hours. And staffing is, is very difficult, we'll put it that way.
Can I just follow up? Did you have the mobile pickup lanes before the pandemic?
Um, we had mobile order pay in place just before the pandemic. It was just a right place, right time.
And even that, with that mobile order pickup, you still had to close due to financial issues?
Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of restaurants close anyway, right? Didn't they?
Correct.
During the pandemic.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, you're right, a lot of things changed with the pandemic, a lot of negatives, but there have been some positives too, in that people have become more reliant on technology. And they can order their food on an app, McDonald's app, right, while they're on the highway, and then come up to your location, pull into the, a parking spot, and somebody will bring that food out to them, which is almost like having drive-through. I mean, I, you know, it seems like you almost have that type of option right now with this new technology. So I guess that's, you know, I.
And I guess that was why I directed the question, as far as if that was an option during the pandemic, as far as the mobile parking spaces, and it seems like it was in place, and even with that, you know, there, there was still.
Well, at the very beginning, yes, but people have become accustomed to using that technology now. And I think.
It's, it's a very slow adoption rate, I can tell you, because I'm on the National Technology Board for McDonald's for the operator side, and it's, it's very slow. Additionally, you can do the same thing in, hit the store, you go through our geofence, and I don't want to get too technical, go through our geofence, and actually, you don't have to order at the drive-through, you just pull straight forward, pay and pick up your food, and you're gone. But that's different technology.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I think things are going to maybe progress in that direction even more. So you do have some kind of option to have a hybrid drive-through, you know, it's not a complete drive-through, but it's a hybrid drive-through, you know. The other question I, question I had was more about how the whole ordering is going to take place. After you order, I can see on the site where you're going to be putting the ordering right where all the parking lot is right now, but where is the actual, where you pay and actually pick your food up? Is that, is that, could you just point where that is? I guess, is that?
So, sorry. If you go through the drive-through, make your orders, as you get to the first corner of the building or less, you know, on the outside, probably about 10 feet in would be the first window, and then about 40 feet after that would be the second window. So it's all on that far side of the building.
So how far away, I guess, is that from the door where people will be leaving the restaurant?
Not far. It's about, let's say approximately a little over 30 feet.
30 feet?
No.
No, the building's only, the building's only less than 100.
No, so there's the cash booth in the back, and then if you go up to the, see where that line squirrels to the left?
Where you're actually picking the food up then, right?
Yeah. It would be right.
And then the door's right here.
Correct. And that's in a, that's the same in a typical.
I guess, my concern is really with safety, the bureau's with you.
Correct.
Right now, in parking lots, unfortunately, are very dangerous areas for pedestrians and for everybody. I mean, that, more accidents and more people get hurt and killed than parking lots and, than driving a car, unfortunately. I guess today, in my mind anyway, when you are, park your car, you get out, and you, you don't have to, obviously, you have to look to see if there's any oncoming traffic, but you don't have to go through cars that are queuing up for the driver. And that, to me, you know, you know, some people, when they are in the queue, and, you know, you're waiting for your food, and you're looking at your phone, and unfortunately, you don't, you lose patience, and, or you lose.
Attention span.
You don't pay attention. And I guess my concern is, by having the, the drive-up, is that it'll be actually causing a more dangerous situation, you know, for people who are coming to the site, that's all. And then, so when people, after they get their food, when they leave, and if they're coming out that door, that causes kind of, you know, a situation there, I think.
Well, I can tell you.
It's less safe than it is currently right now.
In my experience in being in this business for a while, over 20 years, I won't tell you, I haven't, we haven't had zero accidents, but I can't remember there being an accident on our lot, and count on one hand, and it was a situation where it'd be like rainy at night, a, a one-off. But you'd be surprised with the, the striping and signage that people are aware, especially coming out of the drive-through.
I guess.
I understand that, the.
I'll be honest with you, I like to go to McDonald's, my wife doesn't like me to go to McDonald's, but I like to go to McDonald's. I enjoy it, quite frankly, and I always, for some reason, when I go to one in Westford, I do feel a little safer when I go into the store than I do at, say, there's one in Lowell or Tewksbury or whatever. And that's just how I feel when I'm walking in there, so.
Not unlike Jay. I like McDonald's as well. I like your french fries. I go, we travel a lot, my wife and I, and we stop for the, we make our order, we go in the drive-through, half the time I pull over because the drive-throughs are so long, I go in the building, come out, and the car that was in front of me, it made it maybe two cars further up after I came out. So the waits are, are long, no matter if you got it or not. The things that you're arguing for to advantage for you for making more money would be in this town a disadvantage for all the other restaurants in this town, because they don't have that advantage. And they don't have the opportunity to have that advantage because they don't have drive, drive-through perspectives and.
So if I put my marketing hat on, I know the marketing people would.
Well, you know, you can't speak for other companies.
No, I understand. But our direct competitors aren't in this marketplace. The only one that I would ever say is our competitor is.
We have a lot of, along our commercial district, we have a lot of restaurants, they're not stand-alones.
Correct.
But they're, they're well-used, as well as yours is. If you become the only drive-through option, that's going to be a detriment to all the others. And you're, you're, how'd you like to be an issue if you're the only one with a drive-through?
Business decision.
Well, now you're just sitting short the other foot now. That's your problem, that you don't have.
I'm not, I'm not sure about, I have that, I'm not sure about that, Paul, because one of my concerns about, I mean, it's kind of ramping up today. I'm reading today's paper with these breakthrough things and this Delta variant, all that sort of thing. So I think, my guess is, a lot of the traffic comes off 495, and I'm thinking from a health perspective that it's probably safer for some person who's coming off 495, that, who knows what their background is, goes through a drive-through and orders at one place and pays cash and then picks up the food, and doesn't go face-to-face with, you know, some student that's working at the school, Westford Academy, that's face-to-face to go back tomorrow with, after having contact with whoever knew, whoever came off 495. And I think it's a factor of COVID, and I think from a health perspective, a drive-through is a lot safer, even though there are options for, at Panera, I use the Panera app, and I go in and the bags there, and I walk in and pick it up, and it works nicely, and I've done a lot of DoorDash when I'm not home off my phone, and I'm starting to get used to it. But I think that, that's a, that's a factor. But if we do this variance, and we're here, you know, five years from now, and the whole, the whole health issue with the COVID changes, if you get a permanent variance, I mean, it may be, it may be a good tool during this period we're in right now, that we were in, that we're out of, and maybe going back in again. I think it's a, it's a good option, it's a good, safe option for this community, not, and I don't think all those restaurants Paul's talking about are the people coming off 495, because they're not pulling in and sitting down and ordering a dinner and having a drink, they're moving, they're getting off the highway, they may go in to use your restroom, or they may not.
They do.
But then they're going to be moving on. And I don't, I would think we're safer if those people aren't coming into your facility. But on the other hand, if we give you this variance and this COVID's over, then you've got it for good, and it's not just a stopgap measure, we give you this to make it safer, it's like here for good. So on one hand, I, I can convince myself that it's, it's an option for health and safety that's probably appropriate right now. But long-term, the community is very opposed, as you can gather from some of the stuff you've seen. And there's been four, I think, four town meeting attempts at this, like Peter Napoli was the first one, way back in the day, they had number one, it didn't go well, and it hasn't ever gone well. So I think, you know, the variance issue is a permanent solution to a, what I see as a temporary health problem.
And if I may.
Sure, great.
I just want to say one thing. We have had, you mentioned, I think, the fact that.
Just announce your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Paula Wright. I'm the one who was around in 84. I was around in 84 when we started.
I want a brains.
But you mentioned before about the group for the elderly, the.
Council Aging.
Council Aging.
Yes, yes.
I get a lot of feedback saying, why don't you have a drive-through, especially in the winter and when it's raining?
Absolutely.
And so we also, obviously, we're thinking about what's going on now with the pandemic or has gone on, but we also are thinking about our customers. And as Donnie said, around the country, there are a huge number of drive-through restaurants that, you know, the towns have looked at it and have gone through some of these issues, but it's not all just about, obviously, we want to grow and do the best we can, but it's not all about that, it's also about what our customers are telling us. And I mean, you'd be surprised how many people say, why don't you have a drive-through? This is crazy.
I know. And I've heard that, I have heard it, absolutely.
And if I may just comment on the, the comment you made as far as business advantage, disadvantage, the variance standards are meant to not have advantage or disadvantage. They are univer, meant to be universally applied and, and quite honestly, narrowly tailored. They're not meant to be for every business opening up the floodgates, okay, come in and get your drive-through variance. And in that sense, they are difficult to obtain. They have to, the property has to satisfy the three specific standards, and it's very, very particular to each property. And as you mentioned, there are other standalone restaurants in town, but this property, given the fact that it is surrounded by wetlands, and, and I'll be specific, that first criteria, it's not, it's not any, any applicable, unique characteristic of the property. It is specific to soil, topography, and shape. And given this property and the significant wetlands on the property, it's both a detriment in that the rest of the property cannot be developed, but also a unique benefit in that it provides a buffer, in that there won't be, you know, in other shopping plazas where there are numerous buildings and numerous restaurant uses, that's not going to happen with this specific property, given the soil conditions and the wetlands on the property.
All that you just said is true, but all these conditions were in effect when he bought this place.
Right.
He knew going in that he couldn't expand it at that time, the town meetings have substantiated that several times now, and the majority of the town doesn't want it. And that's, but, and again, you all knew this when you signed the purchase and sale agreement.
Absolutely, and I agree with that, but also the world as we know it has changed.
Without question. So I think the other issue here too is, once again, in my big Suburban, I was in Alton, New Hampshire, and they have a drive-through there. And to Jay's point, that building is much different than this building in the overall look, because, yes, there is a door to get in, but it's on one side. The other side, where all the drive-through activity comes through as far as paying and picking up, there's no entry. So it's safe for the cars to come down. And it's a much wider lot, because once again, I got in the car and I drove around just to see what it was like, and then when I got back here, I said, yeah, that's the difference. I said, you know, there is, you know, because in, in this plan here, there's 22 feet between the parking spaces on the right-hand side and where the drive-through, potential drive-through is going to go. You know, that's barely enough for a car to back out of that parking space if you have another car in the queue and get turned around. Because once again, if you've got a 16-foot car, eh, or in my case, bigger than a 16-foot car. If you look around Westford, there's a lot of big cars. So I think that's another thing. I mean, I don't think the building is, is situated properly, or not situated, but built properly to accommodate a drive-through. You know, and I think you would have to go for a lot of modification in order to make it right.
And I would also like to mention, I mean, we're, we're not expecting if we were to get a use variance, we're building tomorrow. We understand that this is the first step in a very long process in talking with the building department, the engineering department, police, fire, safety, and also making sure that, and again, this is a rendering, this may or may not be the final plan, but really, we're, we're trying to just, for demonstration purposes, show you what we are thinking of proposing. But again, we will work with all of the relevant departments to ensure that we're meeting their requirements and their concerns as well.
The only difference is we swing the biggest stick. Any more comments from the board before I open it up to the, oh, Dave?
I do have a comment. For better or worse, the town of Westford many years ago made a policy choice, no drive-throughs. That was a thought out, it was discussed, and I could cite you a lot of reasons why. During the pandemic, a lot of people wanted to service restaurants that they used to dine in, and they couldn't, so they went to alternatives in terms of pickup. And I think the town of Westford, like many other towns, accommodated these patrons, whether it be Burden's, Eva Caccino, 99, whatever. And, you know, McDonald's had that same option, and they may or not, may not have wanted to address it. But I, I think we've made a policy choice, and we don't want it. And I think one of the things you've heard, for sure, is that, you know, we've been through most recently, three or four times a town meeting where people have brought this forward. I was involved in a town in the early 80s when this thing came on the scene, and we didn't want it. And I think that's the, that's what you, that's what you're facing. And we, it's a, it's just a, for better or worse, a policy choice, which is not good for you, but we think it's good for the town.
And if I may respond just briefly, I, I absolutely hear you on that, and we are generally aware of, not even just the most recent town meeting, but the longstanding, as you mentioned, basically prohibition to the drive-through use. But in Massachusetts specifically, towns do not have to permit use variances unless it is explicitly provided for in the zoning bylaws. And Westford is one of those towns that explicitly permits use variances, ultimately acknowledging there may be unique situations, again, provided it meets the three criteria, which I understand what you're saying about policy, but I think really the focus is on the three use variance standards here tonight.
I think you're right about that.
Getting to the criteria though, number three here, it says without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. I think it would substantially derogate the intent of what was passed back in the 80s in 2020 and 2021.
Just to play devil's advocate, I would say the restaurant use is permitted as of right. Drive-through uses are permitted by special permit. And again, as, over the course of the past year and a half, it's been established that delivering food outside a restaurant establishment to cars is also an acceptable permitted use. And as I had mentioned earlier. And as I had mentioned earlier, again, the overarching goals of the bylaws, which is ultimately what drives each regulation, is ultimately geared towards protecting the health, the welfare, traffic concerns of, so I would argue those, again, I understand as far as specifically prohibiting drive-through uses towards restaurant, but looked at in the larger context, I think there is an argument that it would not substantially nullify the intent of the bylaws.
Okay, so I am going to open this up to public comment. Bob Jeffries?
Sorry, one last thing. So folks, we did receive a large number of email correspondence from you, and just, you may be wondering, did the zoning board see your email or not? We, well, mostly. So we sent them one supplemental packet, and we sent them a second supplemental packet today. I believe they've seen all emails received as of 3:00 PM today. But if you sent an email after 3:00 PM today, I do not believe the board has had a chance to see that. We just, we ran out of time, and you folks, McCummins, are very busy, we appreciate the comment, but that's the answer. So 3:00 or earlier today, they likely have seen it in their email or in these materials here today.
Are those supplemental packets online, so we can see them?
We will upload those to the website as well.
Okay, so, so I am going to open this up to public comment. Before anybody speaks, make your point, and if someone else is coming up behind that person, we do not want to hear the same information over again. I will stop you dead in your tracks. So new information only from everyone, please.
Chairman, can you put the three variance names up, since that's, is there anywhere to put that slide?
Criteria.
Criteria, sorry. Stephen.
Name for the record, please.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. I have a question of the applicant, Mr. Chair, if you could ask, please, how many businesses does he own?
He said 16.
Thank you. So the first thing I'd like to say is, as we all know, that Westford did have, when this McDonald's was built, a drive-through capacity was put in, and the planning board made them brick over that, so that it's not used. Second thing is, town meeting has basically, as you know, decided that this is not an argument that we accept, that customers, oh, nevermind, I'm not going to say that one. Sorry, 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 sorry. So the little, this economic problem, obviously, the restaurant has been open for many, many years, and Donnie has, Mr. Wright has owned it for 12 years, and it has not been an economic hardship during that time without the drive-in. Town meeting, you talked about, the attorney talked about health issues, and town meeting considered that, and we were concerned with the queuing of cars causing emissions. She also mentioned that. It seems to me that curbside, or any kind of other pickup you pull in, they're coming to you so you can turn your car off while you're waiting, versus queuing where you keep it on so you move around. So I think the curbside that we have given relief by having makes the third variance irrelevant. Let's see. Also, when you're reducing the 12 parking spaces, I think one of you did mention that, and if they plan to have 30 to 35 employees, or at least a few more per shift, those employees will take up the parking spaces. So if there are 15 per shift, it could be that that's only 30 spaces for people to come in. So I think that's a serious reduction of the ability to come in or to do curbside pickup. One of the, mentioned that there's, it could cause a flow for the fire trucks, and that perhaps the fire department would look at that. Maybe the town should require this McDonald's to increase the ability of the fire trucks to go through the lot. And also, safety concerns with the door and the pickup window and the queuing of the cars, as everybody said, this is a unique lot, so I think that that safety concern is a concern, and there's not a lot of way to change that. And lastly, you talked about that this might be the first step in this business. It scares me to death to think about you all giving a variance and then McDonald's completely changing and being more of a problem in that area. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the board, I'm Troncy Ture, Green Needles Road. I just have a few comments here, the refute, the attorney's comments on the three standards here. I wonder if you had a chance to read my memo about addressing the three standards? I'll just briefly go over a couple of them. I understand that the applicant has to meet all three standards. I think there's no question that the third standard, given the past town meetings, there were five town meetings, all voted down, plus your very own vote back in May against the amendment. We're talking only about this use variance, and these are the three standards. I don't understand, maybe I'm in this, I'm just a slow learner, but the top, the topography, I don't believe has anything to do with having a drive-through window. I just don't understand how soil conditions impact whether you do have a drive-through window. Second criteria was financial hardship. I don't understand the financial hardship, since they've been in existence for 26 years in that location. 26 years, never mentioned any financial hardship back, like in, back in 2008, the banking issues. I don't understand how they say they're at a financial disadvantage. And lastly, again, standard three, it's obvious, as Mr. Earl pointed out, five town meetings, that should be sufficient to show that they have not met that third standard. Thank you.
Thanks, Troncy. Someone else?
Carol Morris, thank you for hearing me speak. Carol Morris, 28th Trail in Westford. And I just wanted to mention, I've lived in town for 43 years, I take great pride. I taught at Westford Academy for 12 years, I worked in the town library, I volunteered at a number of organizations. My son and his wife chose to live in Westford as well, when they married and bought a home. At Springtown Meeting this year, my son and his wife packed up their eight-month-old baby and went to town meeting to cast their vote opposing this drive-through. And I just would like to urge you to respect the will of the people. We urge you not to overturn what has been, has been put forth by the residents of Westford. Thank you.
Hi, Erica Cole, Francis Hill Road. Just a couple of comments on the variance standards and then a general comment regarding the, so the first one, the soil conditions and the shape and topology, when I look at the map that I think was presented, it seemed to show that the restaurant adjacent to the McDonald's actually is closer to the wetlands than the McDonald's. So the notion that there's no expandability, I'm not sure I followed the logic there, so I just wanted to point that out. Regarding the second concern regarding the financial hardship, I think the applicant has acknowledged that this will be a very long process, and ideally, by this time next year, we would be out of the pandemic. And so that the part that, of the argument that says that they are enduring financial hardship, and I do not doubt they endured financial hardship during the pandemic, ideally, that'll be gone by the time this could be implemented. So it's hard to see the second one as well. And then, of course, the last one regarding the substantial detriment to public good. I think the discussion at town meeting very clearly stated the position of many of the Westford residents, suggesting that they believe that there are concerns regarding particulate matter, which is, there are many articles that you can read about, and that have driven many other townships and cities throughout the country to revoke existing bylaws, and that the trend seems to be going in many counties the other way. And for that reason, there is a concern regarding the public good, and to the point that many of you have made regarding concerns regarding safety, that that may also be a concern. So regarding the public good, I would say that, I'm not sure I'm following how that particular variance standard is met either. My last comment is a general comment. I want to thank all of you for volunteering to be servants for Westford, and it's much appreciated. And I do hope that you will very much consider the votes that were at town meeting, which you've heard about, and I won't reiterate, but I do want to express a concern that I have, that if people feel that there is the possibility of an end run around their vote at town meeting, what does that say for our democracy, right? It's not, it's not a great thing. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Berry from 27 Stone Ridge Road, over by the Butterfly Place. I just have three points that I'd like to make, a couple of which some of the members brought up. There were actually six letters of support, five in addition to the Westford Council on Aging. It was the Westford Commission on Disability, Westford Economic Development Committee, which I am a part of, but I'm not speaking as the EDC tonight, the Westford Business Association, Westford Planning Board, and Westford Select Board. I assume you have all of those letters somewhere in your packages. I'd like to just speak on, a couple of people have made comments about, you know, please listen to the, what the voters have said. I'd like to point out that at the June 12th annual town meeting, for Article 21 on the drive-through, there were 167 people in the audience. 167 people. We have 25,000 people here in Westford, approximately, approximately 17,000 voters, and of those 167, approximately 88 voted against the drive-through. So 88 people in the town of Westford shot this down out of 25,000 residents, 17,000 voters. And the only other point I want to make was, in June, in the month of May and early June prior to the annual town meeting, the planning board conducted a survey, which I assume many people here responded to. There were 1,695 responses, almost 1,700 responses. Of that, 67.4% were in favor of drive-throughs. That's 1,142 people voted in that survey in favor of drive-throughs. I'm not sure where they were at annual town meeting, I suspect a lot of them were elderly, couldn't make it, parents with children that maybe had sporting events to attend, the disabled, that couldn't make it out onto the Westford Academy field. Whatever the reason, there were only 167 people at the annual town meeting. So I, I'm obviously speaking strongly in favor of this request tonight. I could go on and on, I was involved in the Article 21, very disappointed in how it turned out, and I request your approval of this request tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bill Harmon, I live on Old Colony Drive. I'd like to comment on the principle of topography, which is, as you know, would be, would have to be shown to be something unique to this, this property. I'm familiar with McDonald's, I like going there, and I would describe it as level land with no topological features in where the building is and where the parking is. This figure here, though, shows wetlands beyond that, and I feel they are irrelevant to this issue of whether the topography affects the variance law, the state law and the town law. Who actually owns the, that big area of wetland doesn't really affect the business here, because the business is confined to the dry land, and that feature is shared by every business in Westford, residences too. We know we don't build things on wetlands, and so that's obviously not unique at all to this property. So my point in summary is just that that large area of wetland, whether that's part of this property or not, is irrelevant, and so I don't think there's any way, at least from my understanding, to cite topography as something that is characteristic of this unique, uniquely for this property. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Bob Jeffries, 11 Boston Road. I'm only here to provide a little history, I was chairman of the board when this project was approved originally.
It was an electman.
No, I was on the planning board.
Oh, planning, okay, sorry, yep.
So I applaud Chairman McKay's applauding our work and foresight, but I'll cede it all to the planner that we had at the time, who was about as brilliant as Mr. Morrison. The main thing that we discussed with McDonald's at the time were two items. One was a drive-through, and we said we would not support a drive-through under any circumstances, we were not interested in changing the bylaw. And the second was the play space that was talked about earlier, we didn't want the play space either. There wasn't any way really to stop the play space, but there was no support whatsoever at the planning board at the time for a drive-through. And the major considerations were, at the time, we also had Burger King, which could not possibly compete. And that consideration, that you were driving competition in the wrong way, by giving McDonald's the ability to out-compete, and we had other fast foods looking at spaces at the time, including Wendy's, that this was a major consideration on the part of the planning board, that we were not interested in unfair competition.
Thank you.
Paul Fosbender, 14 Texas Road. I'd like to start off by commenting on the assertion that because there are drive-throughs in Westford for other uses, that somehow restaurants have been singled out. Well, in fact, I think as has been pointed out, they were singled out, but it was for good reason. The characteristics of drive-throughs for restaurants are grossly different than drive-throughs, especially for banks and pharmacies, which are the two major uses. I'll trust you read my note, so I won't go into a whole lot of detail there, but the point is that at the time, it was believed that more zoning restrictions would be needed for restaurant drive-throughs, and that was sort of kicked down the road in time until we could sort a lot of that out. As you know, there have been a number of attempts over the years to come up with zoning bylaw changes to permit drive-throughs. And yes, there are people in Westford who want the convenience of drive-throughs and so forth, but they need to be done in a way that matches the town character and the goals of our master plan. And the fact that there is a prohibition, very firm and well-stated, in both the master plan and in the zoning bylaws, is an indication that this was all done really on purpose, and we should really take a well-thought-out process, should we want to change that in the future. I'd also like to comment on the notion that curbside pickup could potentially create more parking spaces and so forth. Part of the discussions with the planning board had us discuss with a number of the restaurants how they do it. Chili's especially is interesting. They have five or six spaces right outside the restaurant for people to pull up for curbside pickup, the orders are called for in advance, paid for. When they show up, the staff just has to go out and hand them the bag, basically. If they haven't paid, they take the tablet out and they take, process the payment right there. It's simple. When asked, did you do this because of COVID, they said, no, Applebee's did that long before COVID, we inherited that when we bought the site, and customers liked it so well, we kept it, and it's been an important part of our business. If you go to the 99, they've been doing curbside pickup for quite a while. I was blown away when I asked them how they did it. They have two parking places right by the door for people who have paid for curbside pickup in advance. They have a TV camera on those two spaces. When you place your order, you tell them what kind of car you have, and quite often, by the And quite often, by the time you pull in, somebody's walking out with your bag. I think there are a lot of other alternatives that are really creative. Five Guys is even more creative with a technology point of view. They have apps that, if you authorize it from your cell phone, they'll track your location, and they can time the cooking and packaging so that your order is ready when you pull up. I mean, as has been pointed out, there are so many new alternatives coming up, and a lot of them have the potential for eliminating the ordering queue for an ordering kiosk and so forth for placing orders. Also, when the Planning Board was working on draft bylaws for Annual Town Meeting, they did a lot of copying of other bylaws. One of them was Chelmsford's bylaw. And it came to pass, I also read the surveys, got the detailed handwritten responses for the people who filled in recommendations to the Planning Board. I sorted them into two categories. One was people who said, yes, I want a drive-through. The other was people who said, no, I don't want a drive-through. Both groups were consistent about saying, my two biggest issues are traffic congestion and litter. Some of that was just discussed in the last Planning Board meeting and the last Select Board meeting before Town Meeting. And it became obvious from those two meetings that those issues have been around since the beginning. And I think David made some comments at Annual Town Meeting about that. And it turns out that the way Westford has been approaching this so far, there's no organized approach to how to attack those two issues. We asked the Planning Board, you know, what can you do to manage traffic congestion? They say, well, we'll use some standards from other towns and so forth to help us figure out how big the queue should be and so forth. And he said, they all are based on average statistics, you know, daily, hourly progression. And they were asked, what about peak periods? Well, nothing there. And the real issue in the comments from the survey was what happens when, at peak periods, the traffic overflows onto the main road? And everybody always says, before the building goes in and so forth, it's not going to happen. Well, a lot of the people, even the ones who want drive-throughs, mentioned that in Chelmsford, there are a couple of establishments, one notably being Dunkin' Donuts on Route 110. And they said, quite often, that queue overflows onto Route 110. And people are stopped waiting to make a left turn into the queue, which is full. And they're having to compete with people coming the other way who want to make a right turn into the queue. And coincidentally, the week before Town Meeting, I happened to be coming back from Laurel on 110 and got stuck in that traffic jam. And I didn't really realize at the time that it was because of that queue. And I noticed that people were going around the potential left turners and so forth to get past. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we're ready to really understand what are the right criteria, not only in the short term, but in the long term, on how we want to manage drive-throughs, or do we even want drive-throughs? Do we want pickup windows or some other alternative? So I would strongly encourage the board to consider those facts. Also, we've heard a lot about the Council on Aging and the Committee on Disabilities and a few other of the letters that were gathered in support of this. Well, I'm a senior. I volunteer a lot at the senior center. I work with both of those groups on a fairly regular basis. To the best of my knowledge, neither one of them asked any other seniors how they felt on this subject. They got a presentation in probably April before Town Meeting, which basically was before the bylaw was drafted and so forth. What do you think about drive-throughs? And of course, they said, sounds like a good idea. You know, they were voting more on the concept of drive-throughs, not on the implementation. So I really think the town needs to spend a lot more time sorting out the traffic and litter issues before we move forward.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Edith Chook in Blythree Fieldstone Drive. I think some of you may have read the memo that I sent you earlier, so thank you. In preparation of this meeting, I evaluated research on the health economics of specifically restaurant drive-throughs. And in particular, it focused on quick-serve restaurant drive-throughs like McDonald's. All the research is unequivocally clear. They pose a measurably deleterious health effect to both consumers in the drive-through line and the employees operating the drive-through because of a highly concentrated pollution pocket that's created. So in my opinion, based on this research, it creates a substantial detriment to the public good and therefore wouldn't meet the third variance criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair and the board, bear with me, I'm not from here, so I'm getting used to the rules. So I live at, my name is Catherine Steele Danton. I live at 236 Concord Road. I'm a mother of five, including three with disabilities. And I've had a thoracotomy, which means that in hot weather, the scar tissue from my lung surgery swells, and I'm paralyzed on the right-hand side. I still don't think they meet the variance standards. I still voted against it at Town Meeting. And I say all of this because my eight-year-old has autism and is a runner. And we have, unfortunately, I'd like to say we never eat at McDonald's, but that would be a lie. And because of the fact that we were living actually in Sudbury when we first moved here in 2019, they, by the way, also do not allow drive-throughs. So we heard all about that there. And, which I think goes to the second part, which is that this is a common, the hardship is no different than it has always been for any of the locations that do not allow drive-throughs in Massachusetts. I'm from Texas, South Texas, and I'm in a small town that also does not have drive-throughs, mainly because they just don't work, not because there's some zoning. And they have Sonics, though, which are basically essentially equivalent to this curbside pickup idea, only it's two lines of it. And we were renting over there. My husband was coming over to try to do the things that need to be done, and then there was a big leak in our kitchen. And the kitchen, as we first moved in here, and there was no base temporary housing we were supposed to be in, we were camping out in a place with no kitchen and needing to find places to eat. And so I'm pretty intimate, since I'm so close to that, with that area and exactly how traffic works, both when there are people and when there are not people and when you need to not get in. And my 19-year-old has also, her only actual job, and she's also special needs, has been McDonald's, not here, but has been McDonald's when she was 17. So when you go in, there's an issue, a couple of issues. First off, there are a bunch of parking lots, parking spots, that are not really used. And so, I mean, there's plenty of room to have other curbside potentially, and you have two different doors right now that come in and out. And the ones on the right aren't used for curbside. The left are. Chili's uses their back ones, actually, because it's closer to their door. And then there is the issue of, like, if you're trying to get, like, to the new Ocho that just opened, you kind of have to go through the parking lot, and people do anyway. Like, people cut through. And that light almost causes more of a safety issue because you've got people coming out of the Dunkin', and anybody that's eating at Chipotle knows that, like, that parking lot gets crowded and it's much larger. And so I think that if you have the drive-through, if you've ever, from Sudbury to here, you go by Maynard, and that has a drive-through with a small parking lot. And so I don't know if anyone's ever used that McDonald's, but I'm assuming it's a similar model, but they don't have a door on that side. If you go around, it is pretty tight to do. And it has the, what he's taught, the engineer's talking about, about the two different ones to go through. And in my experience, and again, we have to go, when there's Pokemon cards, of course, to McDonald's, even if we don't do, but when you go around, there's not, there's not the, there's not really the room at this one. And we have both run in, or had a big kid run in, or myself run in, and the McDonald's here has the electronic one. We've done the app, which I had not done, by the way, prior to all of this, and we have done curbside. And so it doesn't, there isn't the room. And I have a Durango, which is not as big as the Suburban, though I would love a Suburban. And that's hauling nothing. And it would be, I would find it very hard. And then I know that if I then was like, okay, all the line is too long, and of course, my kid can't wait because he's got a special need, so I decide, okay, I'm going in for pickup. And then I go in, now I'm trying to keep multiple kids, especially a runner, from going out into traffic when there literally isn't room, and cars will try to go by. So there, and then the, so in the topography, I think I addressed that. And the detriment to the public good, I think that that's where I think it does actually fall into a public good issue with people that, little kids especially, if they are going in at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I was going to be last. Denali Delmar, 8 Dunstable Road. I was also on the Planning Board when this came up and we passed it. And I think we passed it for some very good reasons and even better reasons now that all these people have spoken of. One thing that people didn't say is, I don't want Westford to be any more homogenized than it's become. You know, we have lost so much of what we had. I've been here 42 years, and a lot of you have been, too, for many, many years. And it's okay for us to limit commerce. Drive-throughs are just facilitating commerce. We don't need to do that. They're being successful enough. The other thing I want to say is, we have got the disabled and the seniors and the people with kids, we've got them covered. We don't need to have drive-throughs because we have delivery right to your door. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Ebbinson. I live on 3 Sassafras Road. And I'll be brief, just one of the things I do want to mention is that in 2020, McDonald's sales declined 21 and 1/2 percent. But the first quarter of 2021, they went up almost 40 percent. So things are turning around for McDonald's. I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. Also, McDonald's and Air does not have a drive-through. I just thought I'd mention that. And McDonald's.
They do.
You do?
Yes, they do.
Sure. Because I just saw that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, then that may be the one that I meant.
Yeah, it has.
Thank you. And McDonald's Corporation owns all their real estate, and they're not going to go broke because they have $148 billion net worth. So I just thought I'd ask that one. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Maybe I should check the whole one.
Good evening. Elise Nekashen, Holzberg, 6 Betty Lane. I do want to speak to these variance standards, and I want to thank you for your time on the board. The first point that talks about circumstances relating to soil conditions shaped topography, my understanding would have been, if you were going to put up a building, that might apply. But the building's already there. The restaurant's already been operating for quite some time. So I don't understand, well, someone can explain to me how that item, the fact that there's wetlands or something there matters to the granting of this variance. So I don't think that's the hardship, because the business is already there. The literal enforcement of the provision being a substantial hardship, I believe, if I'm correct here, I think I'm correct, that we don't grant variances to solve a hardship that you create. So you don't get to chop off your arm and then say, help me out with a variance. And I think that the business's decision, and it is a business decision, to say, we're going to close because of COVID, we're not doing as much business at this location, that was a self-inflicted decision. Granted, it was COVID, but COVID impacted everybody equally, so it's not like it was substantially specific to this property or to this topography or anything about this specific location, as far as I can see that the applicant has presented. So anyway, they chose to shut it down. They chose to reopen it. All the restaurants have had the same issues. We've got curbside, we've got DoorDash, we've got Grubhub, we've got, there's so many options that I think, as others have said, you know, contactless delivery is covered. So I don't see where that hardship is. And finally, the nullifying the intent of the zoning and creating a bit of a public good issue. Once that domino falls, it's a loss of public confidence in government, especially where Town Meeting has spoken to this so many times, and so have the boards. So thank you for your time and hope that you'll consider those comments as well.
Thank you. Okay, last one.
Chris Guns, Texas Road. Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. One of the things, I won't comment, Denali mentioned the homogenization of the country and so forth. But one thing is, Westford isn't alone. There are surrounding communities around us. Acton doesn't have drive-throughs, Carlisle, Groton, Littleton, and also Concord. And they've established a way of life, they've established a character of their community that they like to preserve. Westford was in that group. And it's this little pocket within New England, and hopefully, we can still retain that old New England flavor. But bringing drive-throughs and changing things so quickly when we really don't need them, it's contrary to what we always have wanted within Westford. So that's my comment. We're not the only ones. And I'd like to, you know, support those other towns because they certainly have been asked many times if they want drive-throughs, and so far, they've also said no. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, please.
Rob Michael, 4 Francis Hill Road. The one thing that hasn't been said tonight, but was said at the Town Meeting, was that we have established the 2050 roadmap group to reduce climate impact, and this would be going in the wrong direction. I just want to reiterate that point, that allowing a drive-through hurts climate change, maybe in a small way, but we need to take a stand and start to move in the right direction, not in the wrong direction. Thank you.
All right. That's the end of public. Counselor?
If I may briefly respond.
Yes.
I know that there were a number of concerns raised by the board and members of the public, including traffic congestion and litter, reduction of parking spaces, and then, as the gentleman just pointed out, and a woman earlier, as far as the particular matter and the environmental impact. And given the late hour and trying to be respectful of the other matters, I would respectfully request a continuance so that we may adequately respond and provide the necessary information or reports to the additional aspects and concerns that were brought here tonight.
So does the board want to continue? Are you prepared to vote tonight?
I think it's fair. I think it's fair to let them continue. There's been a lot of information thrown out here, and I think, I'm hearing, you know, a lot of redundant information, but I think Mr. Barry raised some good points about the attendance at Town Meeting and some of the other surveys that came from the town. I think we have a pretty, you know, one-sided discussion here as far as the opposition to it, but perhaps they can look at some of that other data that...
Where are they? Yeah, I'd like to comment on Mr. Barry's comments. I think they were very misleading. I think Mr. Barry's comments were very misleading. Communities in New England have run their business with town meetings. And traditionally, you get a small number of people who make big decisions for the town. I've lived here 51 years, and nothing has changed. And I don't, I believe he overstates the support and the need, and I don't think the economics support the arguments of the Development Council. And we, the CBA, as you recall, had the presentation from them probably five or six months ago. The only other thing, I guess I don't have objection to continuing it, but quite honestly, I don't know what more could be added to the discussion. And yes, the counselor did not get a chance to push back on all of the comments, but, you know, there were probably five or six points. And it would be, I think, somewhat inconvenient to get all these people to come back again to here. And I mean, I'm just speaking personally for myself.
Paul? I think it'll be redundant again if we do it again. Okay.
I think we're ready to move. Continue.
Scott.
I mean, I think that she should have a chance to rebut some of the stuff.
Dan.
I agree.
And I think, again, that, you know, I don't, I don't, the numbers, town meeting, and I think it's a different, there's a lot of discussion, well, not at the town meeting, but this is a different, different process than what was voted on at the, the article of the town meeting, with the district versus a one-location use variance. And I think we were clearly told by council, we did the training, that there is no precedent setting on a variance, if I'm not mistaken. Jonathan went through this, said there's no precedent setting. If there's one variance granted, it doesn't mean that the exact same circumstances. And in fact, it did say, and I had it in my notes from his training, that all three criteria can be met and this board can still deny the variance.
That's correct. That's correct.
So we're, I think we're talking a little bit apples and oranges. Town meeting process, they've covered the whole community versus this one.
The applications before us.
One application, one variance. And I feel it's fair to counsel to have the opportunity to.
Public comments over, Emily.
To have, to have her, her chance to circle her wagons, talk to her client, see what they want to do, come back with a stronger push. They also would have an option to withdraw and, again, that may not be a, a bad, I mean, we're in, we're in the middle of a COVID thing now. I don't know where we're going to be in a year. If they withdrew it and came back in a year and then the argument about the safety issue may be different. We're operating under one single circumstance right now. And I just, I feel it's fair to give her a chance to come back and, and either put on another argument and say, I'm done, I'm going to withdraw. But I don't know whether it's fair to make or make that decision right now.
Jeff.
So, I, I mean, this is a public hearing and while there is a lot of comments, which we all appreciate, the board still hasn't had benefit of seeing all the public comments that were received from 3:00 PM to now. And I'm not sure, you honestly, though we sent it to you, that you had adequate time to review every piece of information that we did send you. I would certainly feel more comfortable knowing when we, when it came time for whatever decision, that you did have benefit of seeing all the public comments and that we did give the applicant every opportunity to try to address it. And I'm sure we'll receive additional public comments based on this meeting tonight. So I, I would personally feel better if it were continued. I would also like benefit, I'm sure you can appreciate the circumstances, that when the board is ready to make a decision, I would very much like to have an opportunity to have a draft decision as reviewed by council before you consider it. And perhaps even before closing the public hearing.
And I apologize, just to be fully transparent, I would be requesting a continuance pushing my luck to September. The hearing in August is actually during.
Just because you want to get married?
Nice excuse.
I kept referring to it as, unfortunately, I have my wedding and my fiance told me that was not the correct way to present our marriage.
So may I have a motion to continue? Oh, oh, hang on, hang on.
I'm sorry. So I would like to recommend that if the board is going to continue, that they continue to the August meeting with the understanding that it would be continued once again because it appears that we will have a, due to, we'll have a conflict with the select board meeting, I believe.
Okay.
So we're going to need, for the September meeting, so we're going to have to find a venue. And maybe it's this venue, maybe it's a different venue, but that will give us, I think that will give us time to search by the August, will be the August meeting, to find a proper venue that might be more comfortable for everyone. I don't know. We can explore options.
Okay. Okay. No.
About the meeting, about the continuance?
Okay.
I talked with quite a few people over the phone, people that are concerned about the uprising in the COVID variants and so forth. And people said they wouldn't come to provide their input if the zoning board didn't have any kind of remote capability. So if it's going to be another meeting indoors in a small room that's very crowded, there are people that are very concerned about their health. And we don't know in another month, if you're planning on having it then, whether there's going to be significant increase in transmission and so forth. So you don't know in a room like this, whether people are masked or not masked, you don't know if they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, you don't know if they're carrying something. So it is of concern. There may be people who would like to make comments, but there, maybe there's a way to have a remote capability at your live meeting, that they can at least make comments.
We've looked at the hybrid method and it's impossible for us to do because you need a lot more than this town has. They have a live meeting and a hybrid meeting going at the same time. I think the purpose of the September meeting is to find a bigger venue.
Okay.
So that we can spread out, give everybody their space. Jeff?
So the select board will be discussing this item and you folks will be receiving some additional information. The hybrid is not impossible, but there are challenges and they are making some efforts and improvements to try to perhaps make it feasible, but it's not a simple, it's not a simple thing. So in the meantime, we're going to look at alternate venues. We can certainly work with the applicant. If the board continues this to the August 18th meeting, you know, once you do that, we can immediately get a request from the applicant to continue to the next available meeting. And obviously, we can find the proper venue and certainly update everyone accordingly.
Okay, I have a motion to continue to August 18th.
A second, second.
Yep, August 18th.
You got that, Jeff?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I also request you put it a little bit earlier on the agenda. I'm happy to sit here for four hours.
That's beyond my pay grade. I just sit up here and get paid the big bucks.
Whatever salary grade it is, it would be nice to have it earlier in the evening.
Have a nice one.
Thank you very much, everyone.
We anticipate, the only thing that'll happen at the August meeting is a vote to continue without discussion. But for the September meeting, it may be a special meeting, we don't know yet. Okay?
Have a good night.
Night. All right. Hi.
You can do hybrid here in Millenia. So somebody needs to get their.
This board, this board has a policy that we're never going back to remote.
Okay.
Never. You'll be looking for a new chairman tomorrow.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for.
It's up to the chair. Thank you, pardon? He wants to know. Move on, as they say.
You do the delivery, you don't drive through right now.
Yeah.
I think you'd like to start too. You haven't ate today.
Well, I think this is the first thing I had, I'm going to miss next one because I thought we had to change.
Hey, Scott, did you ever get my email?
Nope.
I sent you a text.
Never got it.
I need that shot for that tree, getting in rough shape. Just do it, just do it, send a bill.
A little penicillin for his tree.
It's old.
They want to pass it down. I can do that. I'll take one for Jim, too.
So you've got a solution to old?
Give the same thing to give the tree and it works, I'll take it myself. Give it to myself. Here you go, Scott, I got one extra.
Thanks.
I knew you were waiting for that.
What's that?
You cheated.
No.
Fishes in water.
Uh-oh, turtles in water.
Agenda.
Uh, that's a, I don't have the agenda.
I had a joke that shut down by a million bucks.
Is this the computer?
Yes. Yep, she's right.
What's the entire comprehensive permit?
I just all had to wait through all of that.
We're going to read it out loud to you tonight.
Mind me?
We're going to read the entire application out to you.
Oh, we're so happy for that.
You'll have a continuance like that. Okay, who are we waiting on, Jimmy?
Yeah, wait on Kizik.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is 24 Dirkie Lane Avalon Bay Solar, to construct solar fields over an existing septic system. I have a motion to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Hi. Before you get wound up and started, one question that I have is, I'd like an update as to DEP and the whole viability of you doing this before we get wound up on anything.
Sure. Dennis Brand with Ty &amp; Bond on behalf of Revision and Avalon Bay. We've had initial conversations with Mass DEP. Just so you're aware, I'm not sure if the board knows, that Ty &amp; Bond did design this subsurface disposal system back in 2007. So it is our design and historically, Ty &amp; Bond has done plus or minus 50 to 60 landfill, or solar systems on landfills, which isn't inherently much different than a leaching field. The same construction concerns of, it's a ballasted array. This system is not proposed to penetrate the surface of the ground at all, so everything is above ground, can be removed if and when the system does need to be replaced. And there's plus or minus 10 feet between the current grass and the nearest pipe for the leaching field. I can get it to.
So I guess I want to be more specific. Have you got a letter from DEP saying you can do this?
No, but we've had initial conversations with them and they're.
I have a conversation with everybody, but it doesn't mean you can do it. So, okay, I think that's going to be a priority because we don't want to spend a lot of time on this if it isn't going to happen.
Okay. As of right now, and we have a, you know, we've, we've worked with DEP quite a bit, they, they were not concerned that it is not feasible and that they, they were going to deny the project. I, I do understand that that's not a formal written approval. There is no formal written approval process to permit a leach, or a solar array on a leach field. It's a DEP notification based on our conversations with them, but they're more than happy to provide a, you know, an email documentation or a short memo to say that they have reviewed the documents to then support the, the project itself.
Yeah, we're going to need that.
Okay.
I think go ahead.
Yeah, and we do understand that, that, that is, we are absolutely going that avenue. So it's, it's not like we're trying to bypass that by any means.
Yeah, I go in a slightly different direction. So we share this Avalon site with Acton. They got the buildings, we got the.
Waste water treatment facility, yeah.
This is a commercial venture over the septic. From a tax perspective, will Westford, is this going to be 100% Westford?
This is fully installed in Westford, behind the meter at Westford, so yeah, this should be. My name is James Manzer, Revision Energy with the contractor, local contractor.
So from a tax point of view, Westford will get the 100% benefit?
I believe, yeah, the whole system's behind everything. The, the electrical infrastructure for the leaching field is what we're going to be supporting with the solar. So there's no actual tie to the buildings at all, so I, I would assume so.
Yeah, I think that's something we'd like, we should get confirmation on.
We, we're getting the permits.
To elaborate that, that's, the, the town of Acton is not involved other than the other notifications. But the taxes, the permitting, the permitting, I mean, building permitting, electrical and, you know, the construction, Acton would not be involved. It would be like any other project in the town of Westford.
Yep. All right. Yeah, so James Manzer, Revision Energy. We're a local solar installer out of North Andover, Massachusetts. We've been in Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and so three. 100% employee-owned. We are here, you know, representing Avalon Bay and their wider support. They're a national apartment complex company and they have a, a big carbon emissions reduction plan over the next 10 years. They plan to install 97 large solar arrays across the country. And so we're, we're the installer for their Massachusetts portfolio, which is a total of nine projects. This one being the only one on top of a leach field and really excited to use this space in a, in a really, you know, excellent way to, to continue to use that space. So I'll let, I can bond, who we, we contracted with as the original engineers of record, to help us out with the design.
So I'm Jessica Roberts from Ty &amp; Bond. I'll set a little bit of our intent for filing the application and some regulatory perspective. And Dennis will give an overview of the existing and proposed conditions. So we filed a request to modify a comprehensive permit that was issued to Avalon Bay Housing back in 2005. Avalon Bay Housing received comprehensive permits from both Acton and Weston for that housing project. We're modifying the Westford comprehensive permit, but only as it relates to the wastewater treatment facility and the leach field. The application is also being considered a limited site plan review application for an exempt large-scale solar energy system being installed on the leach field. The request before you is for the addition of a commercial use to the existing wastewater treatment facility, so it's a modification of the comprehensive permit. And I'm, my understanding, it's considered a substantial use, or substantial change, sorry, under the Chapter 40B and 760 CMR, you know, the, the regulatory portion of 40B. And so we are submitting this request for modification to you all. Our application considers the site plan review and ground-mounted solar requirements in your bylaw. The, there's a, a couple of waiver requests in the application, one related to the installation of a seven-foot-tall perimeter fence, which is located on the western portion of the site within three feet of the property boundary. That is off the leach field, it's going to be direct-driven. There's also a request to locate the solar PV array within 30 feet of the western parcel boundary. We have spoken to the abutting western property owner and have changed our design of the perimeter fence from galvanized metal to black, black vinyl coated for some aesthetic improvements there. There's no vegetation clearing for the project. And in terms of rare species, we know that the area surrounding this wastewater treatment facility has a conservation restriction for blue spotted saddle lander that was established in 2013. We've had extensive conversations with natural heritage. They've issued a determination, giving us a no-take determination, and we have a turtle protection plan in place for the new turtle that was mapped since they last looked at the project. So we have that approval letter with us for your files. But with some protective fencing and a fence, perimeter fence flush with the ground, we're, we've met their conditions for a no-take for rare species. So that sets the stage for regulatory. Are there any questions about the intent of our application or?
Well, the only question that I would have is, is the solar power generator going to be used to support the apartment complex or is it strictly a business venture to make money?
So this, so the leaching field has pumps that it operates electrically, and so this solar array will be offsetting the electrical usage from those pumps.
That's the only thing it's going to be used for?
Correct. Yeah, this is a national grid. The apartments are actually an ever-source, so actually we're, we can't cross that boundary anyway. So we could have done a little bit more solar on that site, but because there isn't enough usage to offset more, we had to actually downsize the system to just simply offset that.
That large amounts, the pumps are going to require that many solar panels?
Yeah, those pumps, yeah, it's about 200,000, 230,000 kilowatt-hours a year.
So you're going to have battery storage?
No battery storage. It'll be grid-tied still. So we'll export a little bit during the summer months when it's a little higher solar production. We get a qualifying facility rate, a wholesale rate, so we'll get a couple cents for that export.
So it's not just for the, so you, you are exporting?
We expect. We expect to export, we're going to offset about 90% of their annual usage, and so just the nature of sunshine being greater in the summer, we will probably export just a little bit. And so National Grid will sell that electricity to the neighbors at their full retail rate, but they'll give Avalon Bay two or three cents a kilowatt-hour. So we try to limit that as much as possible.
So that kind of opens up another can of worms because, you know, that's a 40B project and you have affordable units in there versus market-rate units. And I think there has to be some assurances that the costs associated with any and all are going to be treated in a proportional manner.
Well, there won't be, I guess I'm not understanding, they're not going to be impacting any of the usage at the apartment complexes?
Right, but this, the septic system of the plant is directly tied to those units.
So because we're offsetting their electricity-
When you say "their," you're talking about whose?
Avalon Bay.
Okay. So is there going to be a direct impact to the residents because the Avalon Bay's electricity's going to be reduced?
Yeah, I have a letter from them that we could submit essentially saying that, you know, it costs money to maintain these and that money has to come from somewhere, and so, you know, raising rents or not having to raise rents due to these savings will be, will be a direct impact to the-
As long as the affordable can get a decent break as opposed to the people who are paying full-
Well, they're not going to get any break on the electricity.
And it's in two different electrical territories as well.
We're physically not allowed to-
So essentially, it's going to run the pumps and Avalon Bay is going to make money?
They're going to save money.
Or you're going to sell some electricity for two or three cents, you said?
Yeah, but they're going to buy that electricity at 22 cents.
Not a problem.
Yeah, just, yeah, the economics aren't in their favor. We could reduce the system size to make sure that we don't export any. That's, that's going to be a sticking look at-
Well, you're going to have to build additional infrastructure though to export that, right?
Nope, we tie directly into the existing infrastructure. So there's an electrical panel with a meter, we tie into that, that electrical panel and backfeed into that, all through National Electric Code standards.
Do you have to add, and this is probably more your purview, but so it's a bidirectional meter that spins today when it was, you know, fairly sunny, which it hasn't been in a while, they're racking up a credit. On a non-sunny day, they're pulling power from the grid. And it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's to your benefit because the wholesale rate is so low not to export power. So your goal is to generally, and your concern of it cannot exceed, or cannot be producing an economic benefit?
It's tricky, it's done on a 15-minute interval, so it's tricky for us to say for sure that the pumps won't be running and we'll be making electricity in that 15 minutes, but, but that's National Grid, how they've set up the, and the Department of Public Utilities, how they've set up the, our ability to sell into ISO New England, provide power to other entities if we're making too much.
Okay. So do you have something that you were going to add as far as your side of the-
Sure, although I think everybody already understands, I mean, you kind of like jumped ahead for me, so I'm playing on the side of the existing leach field, as everybody knows. Everything is above grade on a ballasted array. And that was generally just about everything I was going to say. The, I shouldn't say everything, on areas of the leach field, everything is above grade. So there are portions, as Jessica mentioned, the fence on the western portion where, since we did do the design for the leach field, we know we're off of that, will be driven, the chain-link fence will be driven. It's more secure and it's more economical. And then some utilities on the eastern side, when we're offside, off of the array, will be buried as well.
Okay.
No stormwater issues?
So there's, in your packet, I think it's appendix G, there's a full stormwater management plan. Mass DEP has generally agreed that the installation of solar is not considered impervious. We do pre and post-modeling in there, they're basically the same. The ballast blocks are actually full of crushed stone, so their stormwater, the path of the stormwater will not change.
How many panels are you going to have?
They're 405s?
Yep.
And it's in the packet page. Table two-
Plus some, just under five.
500?
Just under.
Just under 499.
495-ish.
499.
So that leach field, right, is obviously used for the wastewater treatment plant. So if there's any issues with the leach field, I guess what's the arrangement with the solar?
So-
I mean, if there has to be some-
Yep. And that's kind of expected and built into the design. So Revision Energy is contracted to build the array and then Avalon Bay owns it. The only, there is no agreement after it's built unless there's a maintenance agreement.
An operations and maintenance agreement, but if they, if there was an issue with the leach field, we had to come out and disassemble and store it, you know, either offsite or anything like that, that'd just be an extra cost.
So it's able to be removed and then reinstalled or removed and decommissioned at that time?
At whose expense?
Avalon Bay's, as the owner of the leach field and the solar array.
So Revision Energy does not, it'd be no different than a contractor installing solar panels on your house, that, you know, once they're, they're done, they're gone, it's your responsibility to replace your roof or whatever.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? Is your reserve leach field, is that in between your primary or is there a separate, is there a separate leach area?
Yeah, my understanding is that there's a separate leach area that is available that we're not impacting at that time.
Okay. It's across the street.
Yep.
And how old is the current system approximately?
2007 was one of them.
Seven, so it's-
So I mean, if there's gloom and doom for the primary leach area, you never know, you might just install it in the reserve and you might not have to really mess with the solar.
When you say it's across the street, which streets are it across from?
Dirkie Lane, so it itself, I guess, this area to the south.
And that's not cleared at all?
It's not currently cleared. Or, you know, there is some clearing, but-
Pretty tree up there. So I guess this is something that should be peer-reviewed?
So the board has a lot of discretion here, so I guess my first question is, I don't know how many of the board members have gone out to the site, if they, I unfortunately did not get a chance to go out to the site yet. I'm not sure, I can't tell if the nearest residential abutter, is there a need for screening or, and is the seven-foot fence adequate? What's in place now?
Where is Sidney Lane in relation to the project?
Sidney Lane is to the west. The project here is outlined even right. Can you see that? I'm sorry. It's up on the screen as well. And the nearest residential abutter is this residence to the south of Dirkie Lane. They also own, it's somewhat strange, across the street, and that's their garden, so their garden would be most impacted. And then the next nearest resident is the resident also on Dirkie Lane, and their parcels bisected by Dirkie Lane.
Yeah, you drive down towards Bobby's Race and just keep on going right to the very end. That brings you right up to this.
Generally a rising grade in a large, open area right now.
So screening is one issue that I-
I don't know that it's an issue. I'm just saying I haven't had an opportunity to visit the site.
We are required by National Electric Code to put up a fence.
So have you talked to the abutters and asked them what they would like?
Yep. Yeah, we had proposed a galvanized chain-link fence and they asked if we could do black vinyl coated, and we agreed to that, no problem.
Okay. And as far as all the engineering and all that stuff?
Well, some of the electrical components would be fairly specialized review. I wasn't sure if the board was more interested in perhaps a sanity check relative to drainage, stormwater.
Yep.
I mean, that would be, the information seems to be, you know, in the packet. That would be hopefully not a very heavy lift by the engineering department to do a cursory review. I don't anticipate issues given the nature and the stone and the opportunity for infiltration, but I'd feel better if engineering department looked at it. And if engineering looks at this and they raise serious questions or issues, that doesn't prevent the board from then taking that, that next step. It sounds like you're also looking for the applicant to provide some documentation from DEP as to the feasibility or no showstoppers. Take a look at the drainage. I thought there was one other issue. Not, not remembering that, so.
Did you see the animal protection plan in place that was approved?
Oh, yes. Can you provide the, can you email the documentation from-
Sure.
About the no-taking? That would be great.
Yes.
Yeah, we can email that, and you do have a hard copy, that's what we just passed out, but absolutely.
And the turtle protection plan is in this packet as well, the one that was approved by Natural Heritage. It's basically installation of silt fence before the turtles were active, so that was installed in May, and then installing the perimeter fence flush to the ground.
So it sounds to me, and just to clarify, they really have one ask with a couple of parts, is to modify the comprehensive permit. Normally, something like this would go to the planning board, there's a limited site plan review, but you retain jurisdiction because of your comprehensive permit. In consultation with the chair, we thought adding a commercial use was a substantial change and this board should have benefit of a public hearing. Hope you agree with that. And so I thought there, the other part I thought was some sort of documentation in terms of the money. So it sounds like you can make an argument to this board that this project will absolutely be a positive for not just the affordable components to the housing, but, you know, all of them, that if it's in here, they will benefit and they will all save money. And then you might, it might be helpful to have something in writing to capture the, what happens in the summer, what exactly is that, what does that mean, and about what does that mean in terms of percentage. So if you can tell them big picture, the project is definitely benefited by this, including the affordable component, I think that would be helpful to them before making a final decision. The other thing I would say is, as part of any proposal, you would likely have to consider the long-term removal, and there might need to be some surety or other requirements to make sure, particularly, you know, with an affordable component, that there isn't some unexpected hit, perhaps when the panels become less efficient in the future. And I don't know if you can maybe educate them also for the next time about what happens as the years go on and what does that mean if you're over initially in the summertime? Maybe that kind of evens out as a few years go by, and I'm sure you deal with this all the time. I think that would be helpful for them to consider at another meeting.
Yeah, I think we need some assurances as to if these, if this solar field is abandoned, let's call it, who's going to get rid of it?
We do have a statement about decommissioning in here that meets the requirements of your site plan, your site plan section for ground-mounted solar.
The next meeting, when we have more time, you can speak to that.
Okay. Sounds good.
And I, my understanding is that you're looking, if the engineering department is not comfortable with the stormwater, is it's-
We're going to hire a peer reviewer at your expense.
Mm-hmm. I understand that. My only request, and you can stop me from talking right now, James, I would appreciate if that can wait until after we get the DEP sign-off so that we don't have the stormwater review completely.
That's why I brought that up first. I think that's the very key component to this whole thing, is you've got to get assurances or make us aware that you actually can do this.
Yep.
Then you can spend the money.
That was, I just wanted, not that I don't think it's going to go through, I just want, you know, I'd hate to spend money and then it gets shot down.
Right, no, absolutely.
Or waste time.
Right, because this is a business enterprise being asked for on a residential parcel of land. That's what it comes down to, plain and simple. So.
So nothing would prevent the board, the board would have to eventually vote if things did move forward to authorize staff to work with the applicant to establish a peer review. If it's not needed, there's no harm in taking the vote. If it is needed, you know, you could authorize us to work with the chair and the applicant to establish one if it becomes necessary.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't have to wait in between meetings that might be a month or more. So it's defer to the board, their pleasure.
You got your homework list all ready, made out there?
Homework, all done. I mean, not done yet. I guess it's done.
I installed 500 panels.
Okay. Emily, we have public comment.
Do you have a question?
How long would it take, how long does this project take to complete 500 panels?
Probably six to eight weeks.
That's all?
Yep. Start to finish.
Emily Teller, Nine Texas Road. I have two questions. Are there critter corridors to allow wildlife to move around? I know she said that the protection was put in before the turtles were active, so there will be places.
We, actually, the goal is to not allow the critters onto the leach field during the construction, and so Natural Heritage was, was very adamant that we set up the silt fence before the turtle active season by June, mid-May. The silt fence was installed around the perimeter and towed in underground so that the turtles couldn't move onto the leach field and nest. So the site is actually secure with silt fence now, and then when the permanent perimeter fence is put in, it's going to be installed flush to the ground so that the mowing can occur as it usually does on the leach field on a, I don't know, biannual basis.
Underneath the panels, they'll be mowed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, since I'm a member of Westford Climate Action, that got the town's aggregate electricity contract to be increased by 10% of renewable energy. How is this project, since it's a business, going to be related to that contract with National Grid? Do you know what I'm asking?
Maybe he does.
The town of Westford has an aggregate contract for all electrical use in Westford, businesses and residents. The state has an 18% component of that as renewable green energy. Westford increased our contract with businesses and residents to be 18, to be 10% above that. And there's an option to buy in at 50% or 100%. I mean, this is renewable energy, but it's also a business. So could somebody look into that partnership with this electrical generating project and see how it is signed up for, related to partnering with, in opposition to the contract?
They stated, though, that predominantly it's going to be just the pumps themselves.
I know, but it is a new electrical installation, so it will have electricity in it, so it would fall under the aggregate contract of Westford's.
I'm not sure it would if it's serving Acton.
It's on Westford land and the tax benefit will come to Westford, so it's a Westford project. That's why it's appearing before the Westford zoning by law committee.
I think I can answer that, do you want?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Great. So we will be offsetting and lowering the amount of non-renewable energy that Westford's using because this is a Westford utility. So all that pump house currently is just a National Grid client, so they just buy whatever National Grid sends them. So we're going to reduce how much they buy from National Grid. So I'll reduce, look at Westford as a whole, I'll reduce some of Westford's total aggregate electrical needs. We're not consuming more electricity, we're, we're just producing electricity. So we're not a new electrical service, we're just, we're an electrical supplier. Now, what would be great is if we could build to full capacity of the site and, and Westford could take advantage of that. Unfortunately, under the current DPU rules and National Grid, and I go for an hour about this, but there's not a way for us to do that as things currently stand with National Grid in Massachusetts.
Will you count toward Westford's percentage of green and renewable energy?
I don't know, but what I will say is that, let's say 100,000 kilowatt-hours are needed for Westford, it's a low amount, a couple megawatts, whatever it is. We're going to reduce how much is not being produced by renewable energy, so we will help the, the percentage.
Could I just ask that he contacts Eric Heineman and just discusses our town's aggregate electrical contract in relation to this project?
Mm-hmm.
That would probably be something I, I can give you a situation.
That'd be great. You got a line?
Are we going to say anything?
No.
Okay, so if we have no other comment, we would need a motion to continue this to-
Well, August 18th. I didn't know if the board wanted to authorize the chair and staff. I didn't know if the board wanted to authorize the chair and staff to establish any peer review accounts if necessary with the applicant. If not needed, there's no harm. If you want to just wait till August 18th, that's fine too.
Does the board want to offer a motion to authorize staff and chair to authorize accounts for peer review?
Slow the motion.
Anybody want to second that?
We may need it. Doesn't give you a link up, right?
Is it good enough to do it, Jeff? I thought we were looking at some information from DEP and is that related to it or?
Well, we're not going to do anything with this unless, unless engineering, like if engineering comes back and says, hey, we need other things looked at.
Right.
I don't want to necessarily hold up any permitting process for, you know, a couple weeks or so.
So you're saying, so the fallback position is to, for us to be prepared to have a peer review of engineering, if our town engineer comes back and says, we got to, we got some issues.
Yeah, but we may not need peer.
I just wondered if that was going to all happen between now and August, if they were going to be able to do that.
I don't know how long it would take to get correspondence from DEP. I'm being optimistic.
I hope before the 18th.
A little bit more.
I, I hope it's, be soon enough that if your department does need, so say we get confirmation, that there's enough time for you to bring on a third party if there's a need, and then for you to get comments back within time to review their comments. That would be ideal, I know that's.
Perfect world.
Perfect world.
Yeah.
But it's okay, that's, I can, that's my goal, so it'll probably be September.
Okay. So I still need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? So now we need a motion to continue to August 18th.
Correct.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so you're all set?
Thank you.
You know what you have to do?
Thank you.
We know what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have electronic, so feel free to bring it to the next meeting.
Scott, his first official meeting, setting the record.
Yeah, well.
She probably won't be here.
Not a big enough record.
I'm not going to.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good morning. One of the others.
Continuing, sure.
Appreciate it. We got to wait for staff, Mike.
Yep.
Lot in the drawer.
He's a lawyer, it's me in the drawer.
Oh, yeah, don't go out. That's not you.
There you go.
Good tonight.
He's at the grand slab tonight.
Big shopping trip coming up.
For him, lots more work for me.
Aye.
Overtime, yeah.
So for this drive-through asphalt plant?
Yeah. We've been down that road before.
All right.
Definitely continued.
All right, so here we are tonight, 252 Groton Road. Wayne and Donna Bonak for a variance, for a 21-foot above-ground pool, the 20-foot, 26-foot front yard setback with 50 foot required, and an after-the-fact relief for an addition that does not meet the required front yard setback. Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jeff. Let me begin this with, for the fact, we're looking for, Ms. Bonak was before this board in 2017 for an application for an addition. They have a split entry ranch on Groton Road at corner with Oakmont Drive, which you probably never saw before today. It's a non-conforming lot. It came before the board looking to take off a deck and add a family room. In the application to this board back then, in the meeting was held, May 17th, 2017, they have a plot plan, and I apologize if it's not in the package, because again, we're looking at this after the fact, that shows the removal, and I can pass this around, of a small deck, okay? The plans included with the package had a slightly larger addition that went to the, say, the east of the deck. Now, that new addition now became an encroachment on the sideline setback with Oakmont Drive because this is considered a corner lot, right? So Ms. Bonak remembers having conversations about this. It did not come before the board with this extra little piece, however, this was in the package that was, is actually recorded at the registry, indeed, and approved, but it wasn't in the plot plan. Reviewing the bylaws further, section 3.6.5 would allow this extension, even though it's non-conforming, but it's less non-conforming than the current house, so it would allow it to come out off of, off of the house onto Oakmont Drive. The building inspector could make that determination. I don't know what happened between the meeting and when the addition was added on, but that was added with, with the, that wasn't part of the certified plot plan that was included in the package. So if you want to look at what Sarah pulled up, see where it says 40 feet point one, that is the little jog. So up the backside is the addition that was added, that little jog is the bathroom that was added on as well, and that is not outlined in the plan that was recorded. So Ms. Bonak went before, Mrs. Bonak went before Mr. Fontaine, looking to have this pool, and he said, well, no, you would need permission from the zoning board of appeals because of your Oakmont Drive, you need 50 feet. By the way, it was noticed that this wasn't part of the decision. And lastly, which I'll get to, there's a shed that was included with the 2017 package, it's been there since late 2014, that Mr. Fontaine said, well, that's too close to the lot line as well. So, simple request, well, not simple, a request for the pool has now brought us here for these, for these other issues as well. Just a quick overview of Oakmont Drive. If you look at, if you go to the GIS, town GIS, when this parcel, when these parcels were subdivided, it's in my package, back in the late 60s, Oakmont Drive was designed to have four house lots behind it. Research through, the decisions reported show that some, for some reason, the developer went back to the planning board to seek the 50 right-of-way, to be a 40 right-of-way, not to have utilities included in the, in the right-of-way. Eventually, and I don't know if it's because of lawsuits or whatnot, it became a 14-foot right-of-way with only two house lots. So it went from four with a regular street to two house lots right there. So you can see where it was carved out to be Oakmont Drive and the bulb of the, of the road, obviously, there's no bulb there and there's only two large lots. So Oakmont Drive is 14 feet, not 50 feet, and while there, the right-of-way is there, you can see from the pictures that were included in your package, that pool and that addition is really a substantial distance from the road, Oakmont Drive. Now, everything from the developer, when he sold the lots and when he gave the easements, all called Oakmont Drive a private driveway. If you look back, I think it was only about five years ago that they started calling it Oakmont Drive, the addresses were 252R, Groton Road, for the rear lots. So all intents and purposes, it is a common driveway serving just the, just the two houses. So, back to the pool. We hear from the pool, the pool is, you can see on this one, we're proposing, it's 26 feet from the Bonak's lot line. In effect, it's really 44 feet from the sideline of Oakmont Drive, right? So it would be in the, that right-of-way if you consider that. There is a fence that goes along the, the Bonak's property, as you can see in the pictures. Now, the septic system for this property is right off of the new addition, so it goes back towards where that shed is. And if this had the topography on it, up where that shed is, that is now a largely increasing hill, and there's actually an intermittent stream that runs down from the old pig farm back there. So unfortunately, the only place for this pool is where it is because of the stream and the hill and for the septic system. Now, again, there's really nothing conforming about the lot to begin with, right? The house doesn't have the frontage on Groton Road, doesn't have the frontage on Oakmont Drive, it doesn't have the sideline setbacks, I mean, it, this house itself doesn't lend itself, the lot itself, to be, to be, you know, a house lot, but they're there and they love it and it's a beautiful house, and that's, that's where they want to put their pool. Now, I just want to go through the criteria, if you'd like. And I can go further into that, the bylaw that allows the alter, I can't say, authorization of that existing non-conformity, if you'd like as well. But, so what we have, for the topography and the scale, the shape of the lot, again, it's a non-conforming skinny lot with that Groton Road and Oakmont Drive, but again, the backyard is, with that slope and the stream and the septic system, there really is no other place for that, for that, for the accessory structure. Now, because of the placement of the septic system, and because of the Oakmont, hardship in this bylaw is that they're considered Oakmont Drive a roadway, right? And understandably, if this was Groton Road and Oak Hill Road, putting something, a pool 26 feet from that sideline would be a different story, in my opinion, than it is from a private driveway, in all intents and purposes, that serves two houses. So the believed intent of the sideline setbacks for corner lots is for the safety of the people that are utilizing that, those lots. I don't think that's an issue here. So again, the hardship here is that the fact that this is considered a corner lot, and I don't think it deviates from the intent of the bylaw by allowing that pool to encroach into that, that setback. I'm happy to go on, but it is getting late, so I'm certainly willing to entertain any questions.
Jeff? Just a couple of quick things. So there, I agree with a lot of what Attorney Bonafon has said, and if it were not for the fact that the board had a prior variance decision with an explicit condition of approval, I will say it's very possible that the applicant might have been able to simply ask the building commissioner for a determination, because as he stated, if you're, if it's a non-conforming situation now and you're constructing something and it's not worse or even further away than the closest encroaching part, sometimes it's possible to have that allowed just with the determination by the commissioner. But it was at odds with an explicit condition of approval from your other decision that allowed for the addition that you authorized. So if it weren't for that, you might not be having this conversation, just to be fair. And I don't know that Oakmont Drive even as constructed, I don't know that it even comes close to the common driveway standards.
So what is Oakmont Drive? Is it a public way or a common driveway?
So Oakmont Drive, it does provide frontage, okay? So it does satisfy that requirement, it is absolutely a subdivision, but to the casual passerby, they would know that there's a 40 or 50 foot, 40 foot wide right-of-way, whatever it is, they would know, because to them, it would probably look like.
Driveway.
Driveway.
Looks like a driveway.
But it is, in fact, providing frontage, and so that's what some of the tension here is, is someone could have pulled tape from pavement and literally thought they were doing work that might be 50, 60 feet away, but in fact, it's not. But it's, unless you are in the business and can measure such things, you know, it is a little bit of an unusual situation here.
And certainly, they went before this board with counsel to seek relief because they knew that that addition was encroaching on, on the other side. Certainly, it would have been their intention to say, well, look, if we're here and we're going to do this, let's make sure we're doing this properly. I don't know how this happened.
All of me. That's how it happened.
Well, we won't go there. So what is your intention to do with the shed?
They'll move the shed, and obviously, there's, they didn't know it was supposed to be there. It's been there for a long time.
What size is it?
How big is the shed?
10 by 8 by 10.
Okay. So it's under 120 square feet?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this, opposed to this? Seeing none? Is the board ready to close the public hearing?
Slow the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So one of the conditions, obviously, is going to move the shed. Any other conditions that anybody can think of?
No.
All right, so we got two things here, Jeffrey.
Can we just, with the board's blessing with any decision, we could maybe make a finding about the bump out that didn't meet the after-the-fact relief he's seeking for? Call out, reference the earlier decision, board find not a major modification, and just, we'll create a paper trail as part of this decision.
Okay. So do you need a motion and a vote? Or you just want to put it in the record?
In the, in the decision.
In the decision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we need a variance, we'll offer a 21-foot pool with a 26-foot front yard setback. We have a motion.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott, F?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
I also vote in affirmative. So the pool can go in, shed has to be moved, and we will reference in the paperwork the bump out situation, so you should be all set.
Terrific.
So, Counselor, you're aware of the timeframe?
I am.
12:20. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Happy swimming. Question?
You want to come over? No, I do have a quick question, though. So are we saying that I have a corner lot? Can I get that on rec, is it a corner lot?
It is a corner lot, yeah.
And then this is a private driveway?
No, it's, it's considered a road, because it is where they go.
Provides frontage for these other houses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that Dicky Therian's house? Didn't he do that?
I didn't.
It may still be a lot of people off.
No, they didn't do that.
Yeah. Dicky Therian was moved recently. I say recently, within 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, the next item in front of us is 40B Nutting Road, Francis Marshallina for a variance to allow for retaining wall on a hammerhead lot with a 34.8 yard setback with 50 feet is required. Mr. Dougherty, again.
Seems like it.
I keep saying you're retired.
For the record, I'm Dan Dougherty, here representing Frank Marshallina. The lot itself, you may be familiar with it, it's on Nutting Road, but it's actually the frontage on Depot as well. Going down Depot kind of looks like Oz, it looks like Emerald City with all the work that he has out there. He's got a three-car garage on the top of the hill that is on, on, on the hill itself. He was experiencing some cracking in that foundation, so he wanted to do some retaining walls. In doing the retaining walls, they had to go down, the engineers engineered it to the point where they had to go pretty deep in order to hold back the hill. That being said, when we went to the building department, or when Mike Cataldo went to the building department, Henry Fontaine decided that it was a structure, not just a retaining wall. That throws it into category of setbacks, because when we go to backfill that, our original thought was if we just backfilled it and made it six-foot walls and terraced it down, that would be fine. Not so fine because of the topography, such sandy material, every time it rains, it washes up. That being said, we have to get the relief from the ZBA to allow us to actually make it a bigger, deeper wall of the structure. We're going to be 34 feet instead of the 50 that's required, and quite simply, that if we don't get allowed to do that, then he's got a hardship in the sense that he can't hold his garage up, so that's it in a nutshell. I mean, it's, it's that simple.
So just, I think I was part of some of the conversations with the building commissioner. So there was a proposal to install the retaining walls, and they had plans showing that it would not exceed a six-foot reveal, which means they didn't need to meet their hammerhead lot 50-foot setback. They were unable to construct it in the field, as was submitted to the building commissioner, it had a larger reveal, so they're here to simply get after-the-fact relief to let the existing conditions remain. Otherwise, they got. So just, I think I was part of some of the conversations with the building commissioner. So there was a proposal to install the retaining walls, and they had plans showing that it would not exceed a six-foot reveal, which means they didn't need to meet their hammerhead lot 50-foot setback. They were unable to construct it in the field, as was submitted to the building commissioner, it had a larger reveal, so they're here to simply get after-the-fact relief to let the existing conditions remain. Otherwise, they got it.
Yeah, there it is. Yeah, I wouldn't overlook that today.
14 feet, maybe?
Yeah. I think it's like 13, yeah. And, and you know, the thing that I'm always amazed at is this is a hammerhead lot, it's about 100-something thousand square feet in this lot.
The irony of this lot is, I think I've been before this board three different times for variances, and it's the biggest lot in Nap.
Yeah.
So, there you go.
Yeah. Any questions from the board? There's nobody in the audience, so there are no people speaking favor or against. So what we're looking for is a variance to allow a retaining wall on a hammerhead lot with a 34.8 yard setback where 50 foot is required. Do I have that motion?
Mr. Chair, do we close the public hearing yet?
How about a motion to close the public hearing instead? All those in favor? Now we'll go for a motion on the variance.
So moved.
Second. Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
And I also vote in affirmative. You're all set.
Wall's done.
Tell Mr. Marchalena.
Never follow McDonald's.
Nobody wants to. All right, Dan, thanks.
You work on time in the morning.
Okay, so we're under general business. I think the business at hand is reorganization of this board. We need to have nominations for a chairperson.
I'm going to need Scott.
Okay.
So Paul made the nomination, Jay seconded.
Do you accept?
I do.
Okay.
Little late now.
But I'm going to tell you, if this is the way we're going, you're out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The second nomination we need is for a vice chair, and I would nominate Jay Ennis.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Third nomination is for clerk, and I would nominate Jim Kuziniak.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so there's your slate of offices. This accessory dwelling unit 358, Jeff in here, you want to give us a quick floor?
I'll be super short. So there were some recent changes to the zoning act that does allow for reduced voting requirements to affect certain zoning bylaw amendments, one of which relates to accessory dwelling units. So the state has come up with their own definition of ADUs, that does not mean that you have to change yours, but what this could do, as was seen again tonight and recently, is percentages are problematic, particularly when you're starting with a modest-sized dwelling. So we think it's time to take a look at some of the percentages and maybe simplify things, and maybe we can be, take advantage of some of the recent changes to 40A, and maybe think about things like, there's a certain square footage, like if there's a max of 900 square feet, we don't need to worry about percentages or things, and then maybe you can think about more controls or restrictions if it's anything over that, maybe you don't want anything over, you know, whatever it is. But I just think for the modest-sized homes that you start with, maybe you just allow a certain square footage for the ADU, because there's all kinds of games that can legally be played, as we've seen. Someone could construct a, a large addition to an existing dwelling, say it's part of the primary dwelling, wait one day, come in, and perhaps convert it to an ADU. It might be all legal above board, I mean, they have to go through a public hearing process, but, or someone could simply state the ADU is going to be in what part of what was the existing dwelling, and all the new constructions for the primary dwelling unit. So why not just simplify things, figure out what you want, and make it as streamlined as possible to get to the end game? And if someone wants more to go over, or some standards that you think are reasonable, and then might need additional, you know, relief for that. Because this, I think, is the third or fourth one where a modest-sized home, whether it was the 15% increase, or whether it's the 33%, you know, some of those really small homes, even the 33% can be problematic, especially if folks are looking to age in place, you know, for those particular occupants, they need things a little wider, so we just think it's at least asking the question and see if we can work with this board.
Especially if you get two occupants, too, you know, that's going into the eight.
Yeah.
Versus one, that guy tonight would have entitled it 250 feet, it was 15%.
Yeah, like, yeah.
That's, that's not, even on the ballpark.
It affects a lot of the houses in the villages, you know, it's just, it's kind of unfair to them, right?
So I mean, if the board has appetite for that, we're willing to bring some materials and suggestions for you to consider, and we can take direction from you where you'd like to go with this, but we think it's, it's worth doing.
I think that should be the goal for this season with this board. And get, get something going that we can.
Even here a minute.
Do what we can do.
Okay. We'll do that, thank you.
All right. Nothing else?
Okay. Well, we are going to need to amend potentially the September 14th date. So, and again.
And the date?
The, not the date, the meeting, your meeting for then, because if it's not here, maybe we can find another venue for that same date, or maybe we need to just find a different date, so we have to.
Is there conflict with the select one?
Yeah, the select, select board, sorry.
Select board, is a meeting here?
Yes.
What goes on down the?
Well, we gotta, we have to look, we have to look into that. And so another issue is, in some of the alternate locations, there are some different time constraints. So depending on how busy the agenda is, and of course, we have to advertise like a month in advance, so if it's McDonald's and you think it's going to take a while, and say we have to be kicked out by, say, nine, maybe you want to just take McDonald's separately, or, you know, if we don't have a lot, I mean, this was an unusual. I don't want to jinx anything.
It's scheduled for September 15th.
Is there what?
September 15th is the date, right?
September 14th. Oh yeah, wait a minute, that's not, no, September 15th. There's some, I apologize, there was some conflict? Conservation Commission, that might be their regular, there's some conflict with this meeting room on your regular meeting date.
Well, you don't have to secure one every month, so how can they?
I understand, because sometimes holidays muck things up. I don't know, I don't.
I think some upstables in town, we can find one, I mean, we'll make a phone call and get the high school auditorium if we have to.
But we have to be mindful about video and recording, so it's only certain venues that have it set up, and otherwise you need to make extra special arrangements to have coverage.
We're special to begin with, we'll get it done.
We are special. So we'll work on that by the time you have your August meeting, because we need to know when to continue to and where.
Okay.
Well, there's a chance it may not be the 15th. Is that usually told us?
Yeah. It may not be the 15th, it may not be the 14th, I don't know, we'll keep you posted. But we got to know by the August meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Like a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a recital?